I've got a little bit of a raspy voice, so I'll try to speak clearly. If you can't hear me tonight, just raise your hand. I'll try to lean into the mic. We've got a much better sound system, so that helps. We're going to begin with roll calls. We call a meeting to order for the Board of Commissioners regular session meeting this March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at five o'clock P M. Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Burdette?
Here.
Mr. Corbett's here. Mr. DeLoach?
Here.
Mr. Loper?
Here.
And Mr. Kiefer?
Here.
And we are all in attendance. So with that, we will rise for the invocation given by Commissioner Burdette. And if you remain standing as he leads us in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and in being in positions that we are. Lord, I pray you be with us and guide us in all our decisions. Lord, I pray you be with our county, be with our people, Father, and bless them greatly, Lord. We thank you for everything, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
For the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That moves us to item number five, the approval of our agenda. And we'll consider resolution to approve that. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board members. There are a number of changes tonight. Under new business, there are three additions to the agenda. New business number thirteen is consideration to approve to advance and disperse the remaining fiscal year twenty twenty-two budgeted funding to Effingham Health System and to advance and disperse all funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. New business number fourteen is a resolution, consideration to approve resolution number zero two-two dash zero one nine to recognize COVID nineteen funding paid to Effingham Health System for the Effingham County Board of Commissioners as a county expense. New business number fifteen is an ordinance, consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to reduce the speed limit on McCall Road at the approach to Blue Jay Road from fifty-five miles per hour to forty-five miles per hour. We also have a request from Commissioner DeLoach to postpone new business number...
Old Business.
I'm sorry. Old Business number one to April nineteenth.
We're getting other corrections or additions?
No, sir.
You might want to share with your folks while we are tabling that item number.
Okay. For some of you that's coming in now, some that just came in, I think y'all are here for DeWitt Road, the railroad crossing on DeWitt Road. We are going to table that to the second meeting in April. That'll be April nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Okay. And the reason for that is, I had a conversation today with a representative from Norfolk Southern, and they told me that we do not have to close the railroad crossing at DeWitt Road. They explained to me that OmniTrax would still be able to have their crossing on McCall Road. They are not trading, you know, one for one for closure for an opening. But what I want to do, I want to take it a step further because a lot of this transpired this afternoon. So I just want to take it a step farther, and I want to get that in writing from Norfolk Southern. That would make me feel better, as I'm sure that would make the parties involved, other parties involved, feel better. So I'm just tabling this, just to give us more time to get some official information. And we will communicate that going forward. So here in the next thirty days, we'll be trying to communicate with Norfolk Southern to get that in writing. So if you're here for that, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Yeah, and just to reiterate and be clear, you know, we're going to table it so we can try to make sure we don't have to close it. We do have to have an east-west corridor on McCall Road, and if they will let us leave it open, we'll leave it open. So we just want to get it in writing, because if they don't, then we'd have to go back and reconsider closing intersection to get that one. But hopefully, Mr. Loach is working with them, working real hard for you, and maybe we can produce some results there. Thank you for coming tonight. All righty. So that's our agenda with the corrections and additions and the one tabled item. Are there any others?
No, sir.
A motion to approve the agenda with the corrections and the tabling.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeLoach, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the agenda as presented with the corrections and the tabling of one item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, we have our agenda. The minutes are before you for consideration to approve the March first minutes of the regular commissioner meeting of the board. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes that you reviewed them? If there are none, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. DeLoach to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, they are approved unanimously. Going to welcome my public tonight. Public comments should pertain to the agenda items only as they come up. If you keep your comments to two or three minutes, that helps us move it along, gives everybody a chance to share and speak. So we want to hear from everybody, but we always want to try not to be too repetitive if we can. And all the correspondence and documents for this meeting in the clerk's office and on the Board of Commissioners website, hope you've had a chance to review those and are ready to speak at the time. And at this time, under public comments, I want to invite a friend of mine, our Superior Court Judge, Michael Modrow, to come and share. He's got some things for the board, and he's been asking for an opportunity with his busy schedule at court. We don't know when he's going to be available. So he called me today, so I invited him to come on and share with us briefly.
Thank you for having me here. Appreciate all of what you do for the citizens of Effingham County. I just wanted to give y'all an update about what you're spending your money on with accountability courts here in our circuit. You may not know a lot about it, but when I ran, we had an accountability court, which is often known as drug court. We combined accountability court being drug court and mental health court here. Judge Turner, before he retired, was doing drug court. He phased that out. And when I ran for office, I pledged to start it back up, and we were able to get it started back up in the summer of two thousand and eighteen. As you know, we have four counties in our circuit, Bullock, Scraven Jenkins, and Effingham. Originally, accountability court was only in Bullock County, but I wanted to make sure that all the citizens of our county had the benefit of an accountability court. And I could only do that with the support of all the county commissioners, and y'all were kind enough to join with us. It requires a ten percent match, which y'all have gladly done. Last year, your ten percent match was about six thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. It would have been a lot more, but the grant that we get for doing this, they cut our budget about in half. So we were really stretched between the two programs. The match has gone up twelve to twelve percent from ten percent. As long as accountability courts have been around, I really thought the match would have increased more over time, but it hasn't. I think we're still getting a lot of good bang for the buck, so to speak, with just a twelve percent match. Our request this year is for three hundred and five thousand dollars to put that in perspective from the state, put that in perspective. Last year, we requested three hundred thousand dollars and got a hundred and sixty-one. And for drug court, for mental health court, we requested a hundred and fifty-two and received a hundred and nine. We need this money because of the drug testing and the surveillance are the cornerstone of our program. Now, they also get a lot of counseling, individual counseling and through Gateway, and then they have group counseling. And then they have to go to AA meetings. It's a very rigorous program. Nationally, the success rate for drug court, for drug treatment is around ten percent. We're right at fifty percent, and that's going out two years from the graduation rate. So that, that's a good thing. I mean, we appear to be helping a lot of people, at least they tell us that. Unfortunately, I do have to terminate a lot of people. For about as many people that graduate, same number I have to terminate from court because they're not doing what they're supposed to do. A lot of those people have to go off into the system for failing to abide by the terms of the program. The, we have two people on staff right now that are actually paid by the drug court, our director, Karen McLean, and then she has an assistant, Joy Pope, Joy Lanier. I forgot her name there for a second, sorry.
Long day in court.
Yeah, it's been a long day. It's been a long week. It's only Tuesday. But we're hoping to add a third person to do help with the drug testing. They actually work for Pineland. But they're no longer going to be working for Pineland, and we have our own big drug testing machine that has to be calibrated. And so we hope to bring her on. She will be an employee of Bullock County, but then y'all will help with the prorated portion of that. For you that don't know, what we do is anybody can recommend somebody for drug court, but they have to have a criminal case against them. So if they have a criminal case, their defense attorney, their mama, their school teacher, you know, their neighbor. Sometimes I have somebody in court, and I suggest that they, y'all need to look at them for drug court. Then we have a staffing. We determine if they're a good fit. And the upside of that is, because we have restarted it in Effingham County, and we have Gateway as a service provider here, I'm sure y'all are familiar with Gateway. But because we are contracting with them and providing them ready-made clients for their services, they're actually were able to ramp up their services and are providing similar services to people that just come in off the street that want drug help with their drug problem, which is a real good thing because you don't have to have criminal charges against you to get help for this. But when we didn't have a drug court here in Effingham County, so few people were seeking help from Gateway that they couldn't justify the expense of having all the counselors and so forth. So they really got down to where they were able to do very little. I mean, they did the best what they could, but you have to have numbers to justify the people there. Let's see if there's... Speaking of numbers, we currently have in drug court, forty-five total participants, and in total participants, and in, uh, account, uh, mental health court, we have ten total participants. The, according to our pop, circuit population, we should have fifty-four, we're at fifty-five. We've been up as high as close to eighty. Uh, that comes unwieldy, but, you know, there are people that want and need our services. We'll do whatever we can to get them. COVID, the numbers dropped a good bit, and now we're building them back up. All those people, ten are in Effingham, four are drug court, and three are in mental health court, but some of the people who normally would be in Effingham County, due to their jobs, they're, they're listed as Bullock County cases, but they're actually Effingham County residents, but they can get to the programs and to the help and the counseling easier up in Bullock County from where they live and so forth. And I think we have maybe one or two people from Bullock County that actually come to Effingham County for help, but we're all just trying to help each other. So, once again, I want to tell you thank you for your support. I think it's a good program, it's a worthy program, and we'll keep doing it as long as y'all keep supporting it. Any questions?
I, I do want to say, while they're thinking about any questions, how much we appreciate, since you've come to the bench, um, not only the drug court, the mental health court, the juvenile court, something I wanted to do when I ran for offices. And you and I talked about that while you were running, and I asked you where you, where you stood on that, and you'd like to see it, and we have a juvenile court. All these things are quality of life, uh, issues that just as important as water and sewer that helps all of our constituents have a better life. And, uh, people make mistakes, and they mess up, and they need some help, and we really appreciate a judge that has a heart for the people, not just to, uh, make rulings, and you've shown that in your tenure, and we really appreciate it. Anybody have any questions about some of the?
Thank you very much.
Mike is doing, he's doing some great work for us.
I'm encouraged by what he's saying. I mean, I've, I've experienced it, I understand. It's, it's something we need here in the county to support these kids.
Well, I mean, uh, I don't know if you heard my numbers, but with the ten people in drug court in Effingham County, and those numbers will go up higher and they'll drop down, but, but even at that, the county spent six thousand dollars. That's only six hundred dollars that the county's having to spend to help these people. I think the average in the state is eighteen hundred dollars per person, so if you're a numbers person like me, that's, that's a pretty good investment.
Well, we care about all the folks of our county, so as we can help you better serve them, you let us know if it takes a little more, we'll, we can dig a little deeper if we need to.
Yeah, and, and Sheriff Duffey strongly supports the program too, and that helps when they're, and, and the clerk of court supports the program. So when you got everybody, and, you know, the local attorneys that support it, it makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Jimmy's been a real big supporter of that. That's been great.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you so much, Mike. Appreciate you.
Have a good day.
You too. All right, we appreciate that, and we're going to move to our consent agenda. We have two items in our consent agenda. I'll read them both, and then entertain a motion to approve consent agenda as I read it. Uh, item number one, consideration to approve to ratify the update of the ACCG Insurance Program Contract Form. And item number two, consideration to approve the budget calendar for fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three. Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve is read.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, the consent agenda passes unanimously. We've tabled item, old business, item number one, so to move to item number two under old business, consideration to approve to amend the intergovernmental agreement and resolution of support of twenty-two dash zero one oh between Effingham County and Effingham County Hospital Authority. You going to take that one?
Yeah, this is the, um, uh, it, the, uh, original proposal, uh, by the hospital. We've had a, uh, numerous meetings, uh, with the hospital, come up with some options, uh, that, uh, we believe are, are, uh, a better deal, not just for the hospital, but, but for the county as well, uh, on this, and we are working through them. Uh, and so the requests, um, uh, on staff on this is, uh, uh, is denial, but there are two additional items on the agenda, uh, that were just recently added.
Yeah, and so what I like to do, if, if the board's okay with going ahead and making a motion to deny this, uh, amendment, we can move on to the other two items first, since I see the hospital's here, you won't have to wait for another forty-five minutes to get to those two. We'll move thirteen and fourteen up, if that's okay. Now, if you want to hear thirteen and fourteen, the ideas that we want to do first, that's fine. But are you okay with moving with, with a motion to, to deny the request to, let's see, amendment, to deny approving the amendment?
Yep.
So moved?
So moved.
All right. Motion by Mr. Floyd, uh, second by Mr. DeLoach to deny, uh, the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement and resolution of support twenty-two dash zero one oh between Effingham County, Effingham County Hospital Authority. All in favor of this denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it is denied unanimously. But now let's move to the positive side. Let's go to item number thirteen, if you don't mind, we'll skip down and, and support those who are here for that item. And I'll read number thirteen, and then Tim, I'll turn it over to you. Consideration to, uh, I'm going to read both of these together, because I think it might be something we'll, we'll vote individually, but we'll consider them together, okay? Uh, consideration to approve to advance and disperse the remaining fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty-two budget funding to Effingham Health Systems and to advance and disperse all funding for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. And then, uh, consideration to approve resolution twenty-two oh nineteen to recognize COVID-nineteen funding paid to Effingham Health Systems from Effingham County Board of Commissioners as a county expense. So we'll talk about both of those, then we'll vote on them individually.
Sure. On the first item, it is, um, essentially as part of, um, uh, this process for the refinancing, there is, uh, it, it will delay the, um, uh, the refinancing process for probably at least a month, maybe two. Uh, that does create a little bit of a, um, of a, of a cash crunch, uh, for, for the hospital. Uh, so all we're requesting here is, currently, we pay the hospital the three point six million dollars that's in our current agreement, uh, on, um, on a monthly basis. Uh, so we're just saying, you know, the two, uh, finish off the three months that are remaining in this year, uh, payment, uh, and then just to pay them the, the funds that would become, uh, due effective July first of this year, uh, just to pay that in lump sum, uh, now, uh, and then we would not pay it out, um, next fiscal year. Uh, and this would help resolve their issues, um, uh, for them and just kind of take some pressure off so we can, uh, uh, get this refinancing, uh, completed. And then we'll come back to you on that. And the second item is, has to do with the COVID dispersment, uh, that we did last year. You know, there was hopes, there were some, uh, talk of some, uh, bills out there with the Georgia State House and with the federal government with regards to further, um, making hospitals, uh, and medical care centers whole, uh, on their financial, uh, situations. Uh, those did not come to fruition. Uh, and so, uh, we had booked this as pa, as also as an advance, uh, to, uh, the hospital, uh, but we would just like to rebook it as an expense, uh, and then we can then reimburse our, ourselves, uh, then it gets off the books of the hospital as an advanced payment or kind of a debt, uh, and then the, we can reimburse ourselves on it, um, uh, over the next couple of years, uh, in the millage. Um, it should easily be reimbursed, uh, in, in a two-year period of time. It's about six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
So, and just going to repeat, make sure we're all real clear, had they, had we approved the resolution previously given, they would have had the money within thirty days or less. Now, it may be two, could be three months even, sometime in June before, uh, we can refinance it. Uh, Tim has done some diligent research with a bond agent and found that we can refinance this at a reasonable fees, at a reasonable rate, about almost a percent lower than what we were looking at originally. So the cash flow will be, uh, better for the hospital. They'll actually have more cash up front when this closes than they do, uh, from the previous three point five they would have gotten. So if you approve item number one, you're advancing them to three point six, really, because the nine hundred they're going to get anyway this year, okay?
So to finish out this year, we don't pay to, we don't pay them to three months, if we don't pay them to three hundred thousand, and then we don't go ahead and pay them July.
We're going to go and pay them, we're, we're going to pay them now, the three point six into the.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
Plus the rest of this.
Yes, sir.
Plus the twenty-three, which starts in July.
Right, and then that'll match the money they were looking to get from the closing, the, uh, financing they were suggesting, and so they can move forward with their plan to recoup from COVID-nineteen shortfalls. And then when this closes, they'll have additional cash flow because of the way we are proposing refinancing. We've given them a couple of options that they're going to carry to their board, knowing that they have, uh, our blessing to, to move forward, that we'll support that by guaranteeing the three point six for the fifteen years, by the way, for the, for the option we're talking about doing, so we won't be extending it for ten years. And what we like about that, it gives us that thirty-six million dollars for the hospital and the board to get back together, whoever's on that board at that time, and look at what are the new capital needs. Maybe we need a cardio, cardiology department or whatever. And so the, th- those are available now and won't be tied up to service the old debt. So I think it's a really win-win.
Who's going to get, uh, refunded at six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for the COVID?
Oh, we have a millage, and as it, as it produces more than the three point six, which we believe it will, will, we, we're only obligated to give the hospital three point six, so if it produces three point seven, we'll get a hundred thousand back. If it produces three point eight, we get two hundred. We think over a couple of years, we'll get all that back without having to get it from the hospital, we'll get it from the millage.
Or, or raise millage, so we, without raising the millage.
Raise the millage, it, it should, the, the digest is growing as people move into our community, so there'll be additional tax revenues from that millage that will exceed the three point six, and we'll get it back from there.
Yep.
So it's, that's a win as well. They don't have to pay it back, and we don't have to, and we will get it back through that. Okay, any other questions?
So, so neither of the, neither of these will be a receivable on our, I mean, nor be a liability on the hospital.
Correct.
Okay.
It's just when we don't do it.
Because it's revenue, we're just giving to them early.
That's right.
It'll be on our P and L, we'll expense it off.
Yep, the, the actual, um, if we close this thing before the end of June, uh, it'll be off their books completely, but, um, as far as a liability. But as you know, if you get revenue early, those who understand financials, you show on the liability side prepaid revenues, kind of like what's called accrued revenues, and, uh, but it's, it's not a debt, you have to repay.
That's right.
It's just showing you received it early.
It just sits there until.
Yeah.
Until it's realized.
And you amortize it off each month.
Sure.
To, to your balance sheet. But, um, it's different from a debt you have to pay back. This, this, they just got to do a draw equity to, to reduce it each time.
Yeah.
Did Dr. Whit want to make any comments or anything, or you have anything you want to say? I didn't know if I did.
I think you summed it up.
Okay.
I just, I thank you.
No, we thank you. Uh, they've done a wonderful job, and, uh, COVID, COVID has definitely caused this, uh, situation where, uh, they, we, we all proved this investment in a, in a hospital that has really blessed our community with quality of living, just like the courts, and then COVID hit, and they couldn't do elective surgery, uh, cancer patients went down, all the things happened, and the revenues were suddenly not there. And so there was, well, I don't know, thousands of dollars lost. So, uh, this is really a, a small request to refinance and, and have this advance to, to get them, now that we're coming out of it, to start a plan of, of, uh, regrowth and correction, okay? All right, so with that, if you have any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion, uh, on item number thirteen, uh, which I think is alternative one, to approve alternative one.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
In advance.
Motion by Mr. Floyd. And I didn't pull that down, there's an alternative one there, right?
It says to approve the advanced dispersment.
So, so I'll, I'll just read it. Motion to approve to advance and disperse the remaining fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget funding to Effingham Health Systems and to advance and disperse all funding for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, and I'm just going to add, which is a total of forty-five, four point five million dollars. So moved. Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Uh, Loper, I mean, Mr. DeLoach. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And it passes unanimously. Item number fourteen is consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh nineteen to recognize the COVID-nineteen funding paid to Effingham Health Systems from Effingham County Board of Commissioners as a county expense. Do you have a motion to approve is read?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper, to approve is read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And it passes unanimously. And we did instruct our finance to go ahead and make sure the funds were available so that tomorrow the hospital could hopefully receive that money, and then you can start on your, uh, plans to regroup after COVID relief is over, okay? Thank y'all so much again for all you do, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. So we will go back to the beginning of our new business and work down it. Item number one, consideration to approve amendment number four to contract for roadside mowing services with McGr- McGrayley Company LLC.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Allison Bruton, Purchasing Agent. Um, so this amendment will increase the build mileage that they have for Old Louisville Road, um, from three miles to seven miles, which is an increase of nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents per mowing cycle. Um, there's two mowing cycles remaining in this fiscal year, and then an additional two, uh, before the end of the agreement.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going, I didn't catch this, I'm going to step down and recuse myself. I've got a banking relationship with the applicant.
Okay. If you'll note, Mr. DeLoach has recused himself in stepping down from the, um, board table. Any questions? Motion to approve alternative one.
Make a motion to approve al, number one.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Floyd to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Ms. Allison, number two is yours also, consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash fifteen for surplus of various items. If you'll note that Mr. DeLoach has returned to the bench.
Yes, sir. So this is a list of sheriff's vehicles that we would be surplusing, um, and we did have a last-minute addition of three, um, fire department. Uh, I think one's a vehicle and some equipment as well.
Okay. Um, just a quick question, these, uh, in the future, now these vehicles we're surplusing, are we working those out through the lease folks? Or are we just, they going to sell them for us?
They're going to sell them for us.
Okay, I thought so.
And then, uh, then we use that to fund.
Reduce the cost of the lease program. Okay, very good. Any other questions?
Are we getting enough, are there enough vehicles to replace all these coming in now?
Yes. Yeah, so we're not replacing anything that does not have a, a replacement associated with it.
Not surplusing anything that have a replacement, yeah.
Yeah.
Alrighty, any other questions? Motion for alternative one.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeLoach, second by Mr. Loper to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number three, Ms. Allison, is consideration to approve ratification of an agreement with Gas South for natural gas services for multiple county buildings.
Yes, sir. So based off the conversations with the last two meetings, we did get an agreement with Gas South. Um, it was same conversation because of the unstable market, can't guarantee the rates. Uh, so we went ahead and approved the contract or had, uh, the county manager sign the contract based on those conversations. So we're asking for ratification today.
I'd say if the county manager signed the contract, let them pay the bill.
Not sure how he would feel about that.
No, I understand, it's, well, I'm glad you went ahead and did that and secured that surprise, I'm glad you also bid it. Do you know what we saved by doing that? Probably wasn't a whole lot, but it was something.
I'm sure, um, I could probably have financed, helped me do a very fancy spreadsheet to find that out, but. I'm sure I could probably have financed, helped me do a very fancy spreadsheet to find that out, but.
No, don't waste any time, just didn't know if it was a hundred dollars or $5,000. But every little bit helps in a growing county.
Absolutely.
All right, do you have a motion to approve alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number four, consideration to approve quote number 21 for an updated software program for the recreation department from REC DECK.
Yes, sir. So the recreation department is looking to upgrade to a system that is more all-inclusive, that offers scheduling for leagues and facility rentals, as well as registration and the ability to accept credit cards in their office, which was a big deal. They have a lot of citizens that go in and have to leave to get cash, come back and pay. So it'll really help streamline things in their office.
This is wonderful. And I like the next item too.
Well, maybe on the next item, is this going to be just for registration?
We got concessions coming up. And concessions coming up next.
Concessions is next.
Tied in together, why can't that be on one system?
There's no, no, no one offers a system. We actually, are you talking about the concession and this?
Concessions, yeah.
We actually, I think we tried that on the previous one and ended up being somewhat disastrous. We had to cancel it on the concession. And so we really looked at basically every, and so this one doesn't offer it on the concession. But on the concession one, which is coming up next on the agenda, we looked at basically every system out there to come up with the one that is best and offers the best prices for, for what we want to do. And so we're, even with that, we're going to test it one unit before we move to, before we move to multiple units. But we know that this, it'll probably pay for itself on the concession side because of all the sales we're losing because people don't care.
And my assumption, Tim, was that when I saw the different items, because I had the same thought, why don't you just do one software? That it's probably somebody who's specific to, you got volunteer people, you got concessions, it's small items. It's probably specific to accountability, inventorying. I'm hoping it's going to be an inventory thing where if we sell so many hot dogs, we know we have to replenish it or cups and so forth. So it's probably very specific to this, not just a credit card.
Right.
Is that right?
And it's also the way they charge is different because the, the fixed amount they charge for the concession is smaller.
Is a fixed amount, I saw that, yeah.
And that's simply because your dollar volumes are smaller. And so it's, it was a little tricky the way they did it, but, but Ryan assures us that this is really the, will be a step up for all the applicants we have in the REC program. And, and Mark and I and Chris looked at this, and Clarence, by the way, the concession program. And we're, and we're confident that that's going to be a great system for what they offer there. This is kind of two different things.
Discuss them both while we're on, then we'll vote one at a time. With the hope to be one day to get away from cash completely, I think some concessions do that.
That would be my preference.
Yeah, because I mean, that's just, that's just money that walks out the door.
That's right.
And you either have a credit card or a debit card or you don't get a Coke, you know?
I don't know if that'd be good or not.
I don't know, but I mean, I don't use cash anymore.
A lot of people in Effingham County still carry cash.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I know what they, like, the high schools using an app where you can't purchase a ticket with cash, where you have to use an app.
Yeah. We probably ought to look at moving that way. And one way you might do that, Ryan, is look at maybe only one registers the cash and if there's a big long line, that drives people, I'm using my debit card for my $2 Coke, you know, because I'm not going to stand in that line. Something that moves them toward that. So it's a good point, it might be a gradual moving away.
Yeah. If you want to pay cash, wait in the long line.
Yeah, oh, I won't say in cold turkey, I'll just, if we move away from cash, it'd be great.
I'm a cash pur, I mean, I just like, I just like the cash.
Yeah, but you've got more cash than everybody else.
No, it's just I like to, I like to touch it in hand, I can manage it better.
He keeps a pocket.
Than numbers on a computer.
That's right. That's right.
The only other thing that stuck out to me was, you know, we're kind of paying for transactions in a lump sum rather than a per transaction fee. And last year we did 72,000, but the subscription carries us to a half a million. So you know there's some front-loaded stuff in there to get you to that half million that we're paying in advance that we would never have benefit of.
What's the cost of the toast?
We're still talking about the first one.
First one, yeah.
The first one, yeah.
The first one?
Oh, okay.
That's the first one.
Okay.
And, and I'm, and this is replacing one, and so I got to find out what, you know, what the previous system was doing. Because the previous system took credit cards, we just couldn't, couldn't take credit cards at the REC office. Do I have that right, Ryan? Yeah, it was a weird system. So you can go online, sign up, but if you came into the REC office, you, you had to come in with either a check or cash. You know, this just kind of streamlines that. So both, so previous years, we did have a charge for the credit card things. I just have, I just have to find out what it was.
I mean, if we need to do that, that's what they do at the tax commissioner's office. If you use your card to pay taxes, they charge a fee.
Yeah. We're here, we're paying the fee in advance to have the system.
Yeah, but $2,000, yeah, probably most credit card companies.
500 also at the bottom.
Huh?
We're going to share from May.
What do you see, 500?
It's 12,500 annually.
Oh, okay, I was looking at that.
And this assets are charging you in advance for those credit card fees wrapped in that thing and we're not anywhere close to that amount. If we paid 4% in credit card fees on $75,000, it's going to be much less than 12,500.
Well, that's their licensing.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
They own it, we want it, that's the cost.
Just my observation.
Was it competitively bid?
They did have pricing from another program that, if I recall correctly, was a little, a little more expensive. And it also wasn't favored, I guess. There, it was through the website, where's Chris? There was three. Okay, I know one of them at least was through the people who our current website is for. And there's some issues with that as well. So this was the, I guess, the favored one.
You just got to grow the recreation to half a million dollars a year and we break even.
You're good.
I'm sure they can handle it.
All right, any other discussion?
I think it's a step in the right direction for the department.
Absolutely.
All righty, will I entertain a motion to approve alternative one?
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Floyd to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll go to item number five. This is the quote from Toast Incorporated, software for equipment to accept credit card payments at the concession stand. Do you have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Teresa, item number six, consideration to approve a location agreement from Randy Smoke to hold a night of praise event on Sunday, July 3, 2022, at the Effingham County Courthouse location at 700 North Pine Street in Springfield. This is map number S101 parcel number 21.
So this is proposed to use the front steps of the new courthouse and to rope off some areas of the parking for equipment setup. The night of praise event will involve performances of music. Mr. Smoke is here and he can answer any questions about this. The preparation for the event will start earlier on Sunday where they'll set up, put up the ropes, do the floral decor around the stage area and set up the sound engineering and all of that. Attendees will bring in their own seating and refreshments, there won't be refreshments for sale. There's not a plan currently for restroom availability. It is a Sunday, there's really no place open around there. The applicant does request access to a power source, but there are exterior outlets. And so if this is approved, we'll get them in touch with facilities maintenance to do a walkthrough and identify where they would be able to plug in. And Mr. Smoke is here, so if you'd like him to answer any questions.
What's the, what's the plan on restrooms? Are people going to have to go to the restroom? Are we going to have some porta toilets or?
That's not currently planned. It's a couple of hour.
Just an hour and a half event.
Yeah.
Okay.
So now the staff for set up.
First older guys.
Some of us.
They have to run somewhere.
Yeah.
Ain't no woods around.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I don't think we need to have at least one porta toilet. You do, you want to share it with us?
Yes, sir.
All right, that'd be great. And I agree, it's a very short time, but I begin to appreciate more my older constituents' issues with thinking you've, you're good and then not being so good.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, I'm Randy Smoke, local guy in Rincon. I do want to have porta potties. That's, that's probably going to be my only expense, but I need to get past the approval first. And then I can work on getting porta potties for that. I do not want to have the event without that. I can't imagine sitting there watching a program and, and having to go, as y'all stated, so.
Well, as Commissioner Kiefer said, it's a short event, so you don't need a lot. If you had just one or two, it'd be gracious, I'm sure, because.
Right.
You know, most people can, can wait, but.
I plan a two-hour event, seven to nine. That should cover everything with a little bit of, we're behind or something like that or whatever. So that's what I want to do, seven to nine. This is, it's mostly a Fourth of July event. Patriotic songs. My flyer will say, come and, and celebrate and honor our God and country with Fourth of July music. It's pretty much what it is. And about 10 songs. And I'm, I've already started because I'm just presuming that this is going to work out. And if it doesn't work out, then I haven't invested anything but a little bit of time, so.
Okay, sounds great, appreciate you thinking about the community.
You planning on a lot of people being there?
I like to have 200, but I'd love to have 300 or 400 people there. It depends on how the, my flyer, my flyer, once I get it lined up, I'll put it on Facebook. I'll put it on businesses that everybody goes to, you know, pharmacies, restaurants and so forth, if I get the approval. And then I also want to email all the churches. July 3, I'm hoping predictably from the past that churches usually cancel their evening service. So for the people who are not on vacation and do not have a church service, or if you're just a regular person and you want to come to something like this, then those, there's something for those people to do.
Have you looked at the idea of doing it on the Saturday before though? Where there might be some restaurants that would open up and get some business from it? I mean, Springfield might get involved if they knew it would benefit their downtown area.
I just think July 3 is perfect because it's a Sunday night. July 2, I'm pretty sure Rincon's going to do their fireworks.
Well, I wouldn't do it on that night then, yeah.
So that's go draw, that's go draw that crowd. And so, so Sunday night, you go to church that morning if you're a church core. And then Sunday night, you don't have anything to do.
Well, if you're interested in looking at Saturday night, Rincon traditionally does theirs the weekend before Fourth of July celebration, not the weekend, like, because they know most of Savannah's going to do theirs on the 2nd, 3rd and 4th. So they'll do theirs the earlier, trying to draw the crowd. That's what they've done in the past. So they may, they may be earlier than that.
Okay.
I just might want to check with them if you had an interest in that Saturday, but we can go ahead and.
Okay.
You can always look, come back if you want. But I'm fine with the Sunday, just didn't know if you could pull Springfield into supporting it as well, the businesses maybe by doing that.
Right. And I want to use Effingham talent as much as I can to find my singers, a choir. I already got one lined up and anyway.
Roger sings if you want to invite him. We appreciate you.
All right. I've done, I've done this before. I was a singer, I didn't organize it, but we did it in Ridgeland, South Carolina. We did one at Christmas time, one at Fourth of July and one at Easter. And they turned out real good. And it's free, not selling anything, no money exchange involved. You just bring your chairs and your water coolers and come and enjoy a free event.
Sounds good. Appreciate you doing this for the community.
Yes, sir.
Any, any questions, discussion?
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve alternative, alternative number one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, item six passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randy. Item number seven, consideration to approve for some middle of a grant application from, with the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency for cameras for the sheriff's office.
Good afternoon, I'm Mark Barnes, Finance Director. Staff is requesting approval to submit an application to JMA for a Homeland Security grant. We're working with the sheriff's office on this grant. It's going to be to replace and augment the existing video camera system at the judicial complex. There's no cost share requirement on this and it's going to be funded entirely by the grant. And the current prices of 26,800, that's an estimate because right now prices are increasing every week, the suppliers say. But totally funded by the grant. Staff recommends alternative number one, approve the grant application.
Any questions, discussion? Motion for alternative one.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number eight, our new business, consideration to approve the submitted of a grant application to the American Kennel Club Companion Animal Recovery Corporation, AKC Reunite Kenon Support and Relief Fund related to pet disaster relief units for the animal shelter.
Okay, staff is requesting approval to submit this grant application to the AKC. It's going to be for a 16-foot by 7-foot two-axle trailer that's going to be used as a temporary shelter in the event that the county has to relocate or evacuate for such as a hurricane. It's going to be for the pets and service animals. And there's no cost share requirement on this one. And if awarded the trailer, they plan to keep it out at the recycle way facility. Staff recommends alternative number one, approve the grant application.
Any questions, discussion or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Burdette to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number nine, consideration to approve resolution 22-016 to amend the 2020, 2021 to 2022 fiscal year budget.
Staff is requesting approval of this amendment for the 2022 budget. And this one is for some of the most recent projects, including the Westwood Heights Drainage Project. Staff recommends alternative number one, approve the resolution to amend the budget.
Just to reclassify, that's all it really is. With the funding we already have. Any questions, discussion or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, consideration to approve resolution 22-17 to adopt increased free port exemption pursuant to OCGA section 48-5-48.2.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, this is regarding the free port exemption referendum that was passed in the November election. This just will adopt the, the increased free port exemption on, at the county level. And staff is recommending approval.
I don't see any alternatives, so is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the resolution that I just read, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number 11, consideration to approve the fiscal agent designation and acceptance agreement for the family connection.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the county has been requested to act as the fiscal agent for family connections for a number of years. This agreement, the current agreement is set to expire June 30 of 2022, with the new agreement pending July 1 through 6/30/2023. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions, discussion or motion to approve the agreement?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Burdette to approve, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number 12, consideration to approve resolution 22-18 to reappoint Lisa Mockhurst to the Tax Assessors Board representing the first district.
Yes, it is part of the policy with the Tax Assessor Board that the Board of Commissioners appoint a qualified individual to these seats. Ms. Mockhurst was fulfilling a term of Mr. Quint Michael, which is, which was in 2020. So her term is set to expire today. She does represent the first district and I have spoken with Commissioner Floyd. He is interested in reappointing her and she is interested in being reappointed. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions, discussions or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Loper to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously and she's reappointed. All righty, we go down to number 15 because we already took care of 13 and 14 of the additional items. And 15 is consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to reduce the speed limit on McCall Road at the approach to Blue Jay Road from 55 to 45.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this kind of came in last minute. If you recall at the last meeting, we had approved a traffic study to be done at that intersection. That was, you might, if you've driven past there, you might have seen the, the, the speed counters. That was completed at the end of last week and we got a quick turnaround, a preliminary report today on it. One of the recommendations is reduction of speed limit on both approaches from McCall South and Blue Jay West, I'm sorry, Blue Jay East on that. But there were some other recommendations, but we just had to get some additional questions answered before we bring them to you. But I will say, one of the significant findings on it is the traffic volume or the counts were substantially different than when, when they were pre-designed of this, when they did it. And it's causing one leg of that, which is the Blue Jay Road going westbound. Uh, and it's causing uh, one leg of that, which is the uh, Blue Jay Road going westbound. So when they hit the stop sign making a left turn, uh, that is at both peak times, morning and afternoon. Uh, uh, it is at the failure level uh, on, uh, at both times. And uh, a predominant amount of the accidents are occurring uh, during uh, peak times. Uh, so uh, the first step on this is uh, recommending uh, and uh, you pass the ordinance to reduce the speed limit. I'm requesting this as an emergency ordinance, uh, so we can get it done with one reading. Uh, and then we can start moving on that. MUTCD uh, does not recommend going below uh, a ten mile jump uh, on that. And neither did the traffic study. Uh, so it would be a reduction from fifty-five to forty-five. Uh, whereas on the turn signs, uh, noting the turn, uh, we would make a thirty-five advisory speed uh, on that. And that is probably the first step. The second step, um, based on reviewing the recommendations, uh, would, it would result in an overall impre- in, uh, increase at the um, entire intersection uh, level of service, uh, if you put three-way stop there, um, which seems counterintuitive. Uh, but uh, since a majority of the volume is coming on Blue Jay going either um, north on McCall or west on uh, on Blue Jay, uh, it's going to free up that backlog of traffic. Uh, and so the other approaches will see a minor decrease uh, in level of service. But that one approach, which uh, is the predominant traffic source, uh, traffic count source is going to see a substantial uh, increase uh, in level of service. Uh, but we ha- we have to look at the design of that stop sign. Uh, the stop sign placements, um, they also, uh, it met the requirement for a signal. Uh, and that would further improve uh, the overall performance beyond the stop sign uh, of the, of the intersection if, if that's the route that we wanted to go. Uh, in addition to that, there were some recommendations with regards to the right turn lanes. Um, uh, either relocating them uh, to improve line of sight. Uh, and uh, those are, are going to be under review. So tonight we're looking at uh, getting emergency approval of an ordinance to reduce the speed limit from fifty-five to forty-five. Uh, and then when we come back in two weeks, we will look at, um, we will have further recommendations on uh, on additional improvements.
Okay. And one of those is opening, reopening that road that.
Yeah, that, that, if that is an option, it would be for northbound traffic only, one-way traffic only. Uh, and it would take the right turn option off of where the current stop sign is. Uh, and move it to where the existing um.
Yeah.
Uh, McCall used to be. And the other would just be where you, where you're coming from the Geithen direction and turning right. It's just to move that um, uh, that merge a little bit farther down uh, Blanford. Uh, so it's not right at the intersection and potentially blocking line of sight.
Yeah, I really like that because it takes uh, two points of conflict at that intersection. It moves one way earlier, you know, north on McCall. And the others can decide on down the road when it's safe to merge. And it, they're not all having to decide it right there at that point. There's a lot of moving parts right there. So that'd be good. So in a couple of weeks, you think we'll have uh, maybe assessment of what we need to do?
Correct.
Tangibly, okay.
Tim, have you looked at um, as we increase in volume there? I know we're, we've got a lot of increase already, but we've got a lot more coming. I mean, can we handle our?
Well, and tha- and that's one of the questions that I had for them. Uh, is that uh, a traffic signal at these volume counts and at this traffic pattern uh, may, uh, may work well. But if you model um, additional traffic, particularly coming from the westbound going east, uh, how does it perform? Because if Effingham Parkway were to open up, that's exactly what would happen. Uh, so uh, you know, before we, you know, pull the trigger on a, on a solution on this, I just want to make sure we have all the, uh, all the data and we're not putting a Band-Aid on something that we have to fix later on.
Tracking with me. Good, thank you.
Yep.
Particularly as we look at if we ever need to foreline that area, just building what we need to match that as well, so. But a Band-Aid wouldn't hurt at this point, something that would.
We need some kind of Band-Aid.
As long as it's not an.
That's not real costly, but that does take some of the points of contact. Like right now, you got to look to your right, to your left, cross. There's four ways to look and you can limit some of those decision makings by probably a little less money. But this traffic state will give us that. So it may be phases. We may do phase one might be this and phase two might be something more expensive.
And that, that's the direction we're going.
Yeah.
And that's the thing, we already spent a lot of money there. Hopefully this Band-Aid will help until we can get something more permanent, you know, before we spend a lot more money.
I think reducing the speeds, the first step.
Yeah.
Yep. Wish we could reduce it less.
And I was thinking thirty-five like we discussed.
I was thinking thirty-five, but, and they, they, they just don't want, the, the, the study doesn't suggest thirty-five? Or is it just they don't recommend going?
They don't recommend going, the study doesn't recommend thirty-five. But the basis for that is the MUTCD guidelines, um, which does not recommend a twenty, uh, twenty mile per hour drop. Uh, now, if you put a stop sign in there, uh, what we may have to do, um, which is another question that was not answered uh, in the study, is whether or not you actually have to go, let's say farther down Blue Jay and farther up McCall and go forty-five to thirty-five.
That's, that's what I was thinking you would do.
To stop. And so we're, we're going to look at those options, but I, we just couldn't get a conference call uh, with getting that around in lunchtime uh, to go through all these questions that we had.
Yeah. And, and it seems to me they could have done that anyway, even without a stop sign. Forty-five, you know, for a half mile down the road and then, because I, I've come like Oliver. You'll see forty-five and then quarter mile later, you see thirty-five, you know? Things like that would be help, could be a way to, to get it slower on that curve, but anyway. We'll, we'll move forward this and I guess next.
Yeah, I'll come back, I will come back in two weeks and we very well may go that, but it won't cost us any extra money to, to do that uh, as a second step.
Yeah, signs are cheap. Put another sign back there, forty-five, then thirty-five. Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
We also talked about this morning about, in the TAB meeting this morning, also talked about doing, this is just for informational purposes, something along the blind curve discussing.
Yeah, and, and we're, we're just looking at that because it's kind of the first we heard of it. And so, you know, we can do those curve signs, advisory, speed limits, which I can guarantee are probably not there. Um, just to get people to slow down.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
It's a public hearing or not?
Hmm.
This is not a public hearing, is it?
No.
So is there a motion to approve reducing the speed limit from fifty-five to forty-five on item number fifteen?
Make a motion to approve as read.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Loper. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Excuse me. All right, we will move to our reports from uh, Commissioners and staff. And we'll, we'll start with our staff. Is there any uh, report from my county manager?
Um, we are moving ahead with uh, with budget meetings and what we will probably do is similar to last year uh, as we get towards the end of it. Uh, right now, we're meeting uh, obviously with the individual departments. Uh, we do not have the revenue figures yet. Um, so once we get those and we can kind of get a better idea of where we are, both on the revenue and the expense side, uh, we'll probably uh, either have individuals or small group meetings, uh, like we did last year with this, just so we can solicit your feedback before we cobbled everything together into a document.
Yeah, I really like it when we can get uh, two, maybe at a time or something, or three, whatever, it's not a quorum.
Right.
It's always good to hear the feedback of other Commissioners I may not even pick up on. So if we could do that, it'd be great. Alrighty, um, anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Alright, I'll move to our engineer there. County engineer report? I think you got a big report for us, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Eric Larson, your county engineer. Uh, Tim had asked me, Mr. Callahan, excuse me, had asked me to put together a capital projects update. And uh, this was put together for you and put in your packet last month. I don't know if it was in your packet today. Uh, but I did, I did a few updates, but I'll get these updates to Ms. Johnson and she can uh, make those part of the minutes. I just added some updates for, from the last month. But I'll quickly go through these, these capital projects and I'm doing it here from the chair so that I have my, my pointer and uh, and, and can advance the slides. Starting with our transportation and, and Mr. Burdette mentioned that we had our Transportation Advisory Board Committee this morning. And I gave this transportation portion to them. Uh, this update is from GDOT. Uh, this is their state road program. Uh, the projects that are in design and in construction within our county. Uh, most um, notably is our Effingham County under construction. Uh, under the uh, pre-construction note that that second item is the roundabout at Hodgeville and Highway thirty is in design. And feel free to stop me, but since you're going, since you'll have these notes later, I'm probably just going to blow through this pretty fast.
Takes a long time for them to.
What um, on this stuff? Sorry, I, sorry. Repeat what you said about the bridge replacement on one nineteen.
Uh.
Starts in twenty twenty-four?
They are in the process of doing a design for a bridge replacement on one nineteen at the county line, yes, sir.
Okay.
The second project is the roundabout at Hodgeville and thirty. And then the two construction projects is Effingham Parkway and then they're finishing up the roundabout at seventeen and Blue Jay. And this, this comes from their report to the Transportation Advisory Board.
One nineteen, they've been working, they've been working on that for five, six years.
Yeah. So they're still in the design phase?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
In order to be something special then.
So, wait, go back, go back for a second. The uh, the Hodgeville Roundabout, when is that? Is that twenty twenty-five? Is that the completion date or when are they?
That's the right-of-way purchase, twenty-six is the.
Yeah, their right-of-way is twenty-five, their construction is twenty-six. That's starting construction.
What's, what's the, is it, what's the reason for being so far out, five years out?
I, I do not know, sir.
Budget? It's when the money's budgeted probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, that may be their programming for budget purposes. Uh, she did, um, um, the lady that did the presentation from GDOT this morning, she didn't give a reason for the schedule, so. I'm not aware of any.
It's one of the biggest pressure points we have in my district.
I know, and maybe that's something we can uh, continue to as we meet with Atlanta. Chance of moving that up.
I have no control over that one. Zero.
Okay.
I'll move on and start with our non-Tesplas uh, program. And that's you, that's our L-MIG money. Uh, you've got a listing of our three outstanding L-MIG applications that we have. Um, the, they're mostly complete. We've got a little bit of work left on the twenty twenty-one paving and the safety improvement or the safety action plan money. The rumble strips and the signs that we've been discussing are complete. Um, that's an update from what you see here.
The flashing signs are in our possession.
I got an email from Kristen today.
Okay.
And uh, she said they'll be putting those up this week. How about the uh, with the rumble strips over there on Ziggler? Are they going to try to mill them down a little bit?
Yeah, Public Works, we. Public Works will be grinding those down to, so they won't make noise anymore.
Any timeframe on Old Lewisville Road?
No, sir, they're supposed to be wrapping up their, all of their paving by the end of the month. So it shouldn't be long. I think it's near, near the bottom of their list on the paving and their schedule is based on basically moving around the county in a logical fashion. So they're not zigzagging back and forth. So they kind of take a quadrant and then start going clockwise.
Old McCall Road is really nice.
It is.
And I'll have a listing of these roads in a, in a previous slide and I'll just jump past them real quick, but you'll have that listing there for them. Here's a few pictures took during some of the inspections, Sand Hill Road and Exley Loop Complete. Here's some additional ones. You see the uh, rumble strips, this is the safety action plan, this is Ziggler Road. And um, um, I think one of these pictures may actually be Blue Jay. But most of these are Ziggler Road. You can see the advanced warning signs we put on curves. See the, the rumble strips, the highway pavement markers or the center line markers, the raised pavement markers. And you can see the, both kind of rumble strips, both the ground in on the center and edge and the uh, thermoplastic that goes across the lane. L-MIG twenty twenty-two application was due at the end of January and we did submit that. And we did get approval and the fund should be coming our way shortly. Uh, we used uh, Roberts Engineering, if you recall. And we went through a pavement evaluation process. Public Works had given us nearly twelve million dollars worth of resurfacing needs. We did not have that much money. And so we took that list of projects and we did a pilot, which I will be bringing to you at some point in the near future. And we used a um, a pavement evaluation program to prioritize and determine the best engineered approach to pavement rehabilitation uh, for the roads on that list. Kind of treated them as a subset of our, all of our uh, roads in the county. These three roads are the ones that came to the, uh, came to the top as far as the, the ones needing the most work. Uh, you'll see that they're, the three listed there, Sand Hill is a continuation and completion of the asphalt resurfacing that we did a portion of this year. Old Tusculum and Bay Road are unique. And I'll just point out, we're going to use a micro-surfacing. Uh, and, and the presentation that I'll present to you, uh, you know, in this, when I get the information from the consultant and they prepare the report that made this document right here, this, this table right here. We'll talk about what rejuvenation scrub seal means and deep patching and micro-surfacing. Those sound like big words, but micro-surfacing is a type of resurfacing. It's just not your traditional hot mix asphalt. And uh, I'll have some pictures and some demonstration of that. It is a fraction of the cost of hot mix and it extends the life of pavement before it fails. And what this assessment program is, and I'll go into more detail at a future meeting again, is we're trying to address roads before they just become completely falling apart and have to be milled and resurfaced. And so it was a combination of the two and it was able to allow us to pick up a third road and do three roads on the list rather, rather than just two.
Did we vote on this? I don't remember voting.
No, sir, it hasn't, it wasn't voted on by the Commission. Um, because the deadline was the end of January, so we turned it in before we had a meeting.
We, we uh, we approved Roberts um, to come up with the list because we were running, uh, we were running short on time. Uh, and so we approved.
Just for instance, I mean, I'm, I'm glad one of my roads is on there in District Three, but just uh, I don't get chewed out very much on that road.
Okay.
I've got some other roads, I get tore up on a regular basis. And uh, just, you know, again, I'm glad, I'm glad y'all picked a road, but let's have some conversations on that next time. Because I've, I've got some others that I get regular calls on.
Well, tha- and then keep in mind that really, um, with the million dollars and we hope that, that that's how much we're getting. Um, uh, you know, our concern is uh, with the suspension of the gas tech, if that affects anything this year or next year. Um, but um, uh, with the expense of the roads right now, we can only really get one full road with a full depth reclamation, which was Sand Hill. Uh, and so what we tried to do, even though um, uh, Old Tusculum was not uh, at that full fail rate yet, it was getting close enough that we can do it uh, now with a micro process. Uh, and then, uh, and then uh, save it for a fraction of the cost than actually having to repave it. Because if you look at repaving, that would have cost four times as much. Uh, if you compare to where's uh, cost per mile on Sand Hill. And that, so we were just trying to, you know, versus having just one project on this list. Um, you know, we were trying to get a few more miles by doing this micro-surfacing uh.
Yeah, because a road that comes to mind is Bearville Road, but Bearville Road may be too far gone. It may have had to be a.
Right, and that's probably going to be a, a, an FDR uh, type thing, which we wouldn't be able to afford and, and get Sand Hill done. So uh, we were somewhat limited because of cost increases this year, but um, but that's what we're trying to, we're, we're trying to work out.
Yeah, but I, I do agree, we need to have good input from the Commission on these. Even though we're prioritizing things and I know we're doing things in an orderly fashion that helps make correct decisions. But do we have any kind of schedule that shows, all right, we talked about this before, somebody's analyzing our roads now, I think, aren't they?
Right.
And we're going to have a schedule that shows, all right, these are our hundred miles of roads that need to be redone. And these are the names of the roads and so forth. These are on the list from T-Splas, Splost, Lemig.
And that's the goal.
Current funding so that we can as a board, to your point, I think we could look at that and then we could prioritize. Say, all right, from these twenty roads, you can choose any of these for Lemig next year or something. That way we can do it timely and not slow down management, but we have input to make sure, we'd be some kind of schedule.
That's right. And so normally we, we have this in front of you uh, earlier. Um, but we didn't decide not to do this in-house um, this year uh, with, with EOM. We did, we did it with a contractor which added. We did, we did it with, uh, a contractor, which added another step to it. It was about the same amount of money. I mean, it was the same amount of money. But we just thought we'd get a better analysis product, uh, out of, uh, out of working with Roberts. And so they're gonna then take, um, uh, cause we gave them a, a long list of roads, uh, to do the analysis on. And they, you know, they do a process, scanning, driving, so on and so forth, where they can kind of give us a grade. So from this point forward, whenever we have an L-Meg or we have additional funds in, let's say, T-Splos. Um, we can then come to you with the list, uh, broken down, let's say by district. Uh, and say, um, you know, these are the lists and the grades in there, you know, which ones are, are the biggest headache.
Have we not looked at that already? I was trying to think. I know we've been working on this. Have we, we haven't looked at as a commission that list and the grade of the roads, Abby?
Not yet.
That's where I'm getting at.
That's what we're working on.
If we can move toward that as quickly as possible and then, you know, have the funding source, how we're gonna do it and what year we might hope to do, kind of like. GDOT does with their roads, you know, we hope to do this one in twenty four, this one in twenty five, twenty six. We can prioritize things way out once we have that. And that'll also have the commissioners' input and help you guys not be slowed down by, you know, whatever's going on.
Right.
That'd be great. How close we getting to that type of document that we could have? Is it thirty days out, sixty days out?
No, we have, not, I, uh, I don't want to correct ten, but we haven't started that yet. The presentation I'm mentioning to you is, is a presentation of, uh, first step pavement profiling. It's a, it's a software package that basically helps you manage the data. And, uh, we, we've gotten a grant, uh, you probably remember approving, accepting the grant to have an intern for the summer. And that intern is scheduled to be that.
That's right. I know we talked about that. It's the intern that's coming in, it's gonna do analysis of our roads, will assist with that.
So the intern uses the software and I need to get commission from you to buy the software.
I knew we had some discussions, couldn't remember what it was. That's, that's right.
So it's in process.
But this list was not, we didn't just look at three roads and, and my point was we looked at a list of roads.
I got you.
For the L-Meg list, and these are the ones that, you know, we tried to puzzle together what we can afford.
And the engineers, Roberts, whoever went through and looked at all those roads and helped select, I got you.
And we did want to, and to, to be honest, we did want to try, uh, sample this rejuvenation, uh, process.
Yeah, I wanna see it too. That's good.
You know, to, to, to see how it works.
Yeah, I'm glad you got that in there. That, that could be a great way to extend roads five years and also address more roads. People are complaining about, we don't have the twenty million to do them, but we might have two million that we could do half a dozen roads. That's great. Okay. So I guess this summer sometime we'll, in a workshop, we'll look at all the roads and prioritize over the next four or five years.
And, and coming up with funding sources, so we're gonna have to work on that.
Sign future funding sources, Lemig, Splos, T-Splos or whatever.
Yes, sir.
Which, while we're talking about roads and I'll just give you a project, you saw the thing from ACCG or either from, um, um, John Burns about T-Splos. Does the commission see that, that we're not gonna be limited to our, our funding projects? Am I getting that right? What I, what I read, it sounded like the tax would continue, um, and it would be limited by the protected funding.
Correct. So right now we're, uh, under the current T-Splos, we're limited to collecting forty-five million dollars or five years, whichever comes first. Um, I think on the proposal, um, they're, uh, they're willing to eliminate, not hold you to that dollar figure, just the date figure. Um, and, um, I don't know, uh, where it stands in the legislature, but hopefully it works out.
It's House Bill nine, nine thirty-four, if you want to include, encourage your legislators to. Passed in the house.
And, and I'll tell you the.
That's gonna be huge for us and for our constituents, cause I mean, that, that's gonna help us do more transportation needs.
Because of the changes in spending patterns?
So we could collect fifty-five million.
If, if we collect fifty-five million, we don't have to stop at forty-five. It's like, we gotta stop in five years. But, um, we know with the growth and all that, uh.
And at this rate, in five years, we're probably looking at sixty million. Uh, that's how much the spending has changed since we, uh, since we proposed T-Splos. Uh, just changes related to COVID, um, uh, you know, more folks, uh, purchasing to ship to their houses, which we get the taxes on rather than going to Pooleer. Uh, and some, uh, and some corrections that DOR made.
But we don't have to stay within the scope of the projects or we do. What do we add?
Well, T-Splos is not as restrictive as, um, uh, as Splos is on the project list. Um, but we're actually doing pretty good, um, cause we got some projects out early before the price increases in, uh, in, in keeping with that list. So we, we should be in pretty good shape.
All right. Continue on, all right? I don't know why it's not.
There we go. There is a potential for another round of the Safety and Action Plan funding. Uh, we've been in con, in conversation with GDOT. They haven't sent out anything official. It was actually on March fifteenth last year when we got the letter, so maybe here in the next few days we'll see something. But there's a potential for another round of the Safety Action Plan money. It would be similar, it would be a scope similar to what we had this year, where they want us to make safety improvements on roads. Uh, if you'll remember, they gave us a list of eight roads last year and the funding only allowed us to do the top three. And so short of any other guidance, uh, I've already have Roberts looking at, uh, roads four, five, six, seven and eight. To see if those would be good candidates for additional, uh, Safety Action Plan, uh, projects. So with lessons learned from what we did this year, uh, on some of the other, on some of the roads that are on that list.
What are the different categories of safety actions that we can take? Signs, uh, doing the rumble strips, the.
Actually, that's it. That's the scope of the work is they want you to do, depending on the type of crashes that have been identified on the road and what qualifies it to be quote unquote dangerous. Uh, either lane departures where you cross the middle line or, uh, road departures where you, you know, just run off the road. They recommend the rumble strips, the pavement markers.
Lanes.
Sorry?
XL, D cell lanes, you can do some lanes.
I don't think you can do lane improvements. I'll have to dig into the thing a little bit and look at it.
D cell lanes, can't you? Cause that's exits.
I'll have to look at the, the guidance. I don't remember seeing that in the guide.
I know, I know we did some, I know we did some with, with some of the safety grants that we got last time.
We can look at that.
Yeah.
But that's coming up.
This briefly this morning, uh, the roads that are so small when we do the rumble strips in the middle and on the outside, there's not very far to get a. A wide bodied car, truck or anything through there without hitting them. Everybody hates them, so, you know.
Straddle the middle one.
Yeah, that's about all you can do. So, you know, my thought is if we can, you know, if we see a safety issue, let's analyze that issue. Are the crashes because people run off the shoulder or the crash is because people hit head on and put them in the, the places that we need them rather than. All over the road, cause you, you just can't drive and everybody lives along these ways and complains about it all the time.
And, and it could be a choice of one or the other where, um, if it's a lane, lane departure, um, you know, then you just do the center. Um, but, you know, maybe if it's, if the accidents tell you that it's, you know, people are going off the side of the road. Uh, we, we just do the side, um, and so that way you don't ru, run into that issue. But you don't want the, just doing on the side pushing you to the center, so we've just got to be careful about it.
Uh, uh, to me, common sense, when I run off the road, anybody here on the side, you know it. You don't need a rumble strip. It's boom, 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 boom. It's, you know, it's the, it's the middle to me where we the danger. I, I can't imagine why we need to have them on both sides. The middle's where you don't.
I think the side rumble strip is to prevent you from running off the road. Cause a lot, a, a lot of roads have a drop off. You're gonna lose control if you.
Well, I guess if you have a shoulder, sure, but most of our roads is about that wide by the time it runs. If you're running off the road, you're off.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? It's so, so narrow. That's, it's a good point if it drops off.
If you would, Eric, check on the, those two things. Can we, A, use it for XL, D cell lanes of any type or in that manner? And also can we do shoulder improvements?
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, shoulder improvement.
And that would, and that would help, cause then you don't run off the road.
If we could divert that instead of the rumbles, just some thoughts.
Shoulder improvements would be really good to check into.
That would be massive.
Okay, well, well, I'll do that.
And we've improved some and they just reappear in the same, you know, uh.
Yeah.
Probably where, yeah, where they're really, where somebody may be driving to, for a mailbox and it just slowly.
Yep, ruts it out.
It's just Band-Aids.
Yeah.
Moving on to the T-Splos projects, the T-Splos funded projects, we talked about the McCall curve this week, or already tonight. Um, so we'll go down to some of the other projects we have going on. Our full depth reclamation projects are out for bid now. Bids are due in April. Uh, hot mix, as I mentioned, is almost complete. Our intersection improvements, all ten intersections are under design. Uh, we have resurfacing of Hodgeville and Goshen planned within T-Splos, but we have not started those. Uh, mainly because of some of the other work that we have going on with intersections along those two corridors. And we have out for our design, so, a solicitation for proposal for design for courthouse road realignment with McCall here on the north end of the road. And we mentioned Westwood Heights already is, is funded with the T-Splos drainage. And that drainage money is also used on some of the miscellaneous drainage on the FDR project, the full depth reclamation project. So everything's moving forward in some form or fashion, uh, from the T-Splos referendum list.
The Goshen, uh, widening, that's already been designed. We just had to redesign for the roundabout that DOT's putting in.
Now that, we haven't done a design on that yet. It was a, it's a three lane widening. We'd have to put together a design package on that. It won't be as extensive as a Effingham Parkway design.
No, no, no.
But.
But, so when would that go out?
Well, I ha, we haven't started that one. We're trying to get some, a lot of this other stuff done first. And because we have the intersection with Effingham Parkway under design for a change in design. And we have the Hodgeville-Goshen intersection as well. And then we have on Hodgeville, we have that, the Collic-Hemley intersection, how we, well, we don't go all the way down to thirty, but. There's just a lot of, uh, intersection improvements on those two corridors, so wanted to get those out ahead of. Quote unquote, the icing on the cake, which is just to go in and do the entire corridor with the resurfacing.
I agree, but you, you do see that Goshen would be done before the Parkway's finished, right?
Yeah, we've got several years. We had several years. Yeah, so we're just, uh, chipping them away as fast as we can. As you can tell, we've got everything either in design or in construction. And that, just have that on, near the bottom of the list, cause some of the other projects needed to happen first.
I'm confused on your Ash Road Full Depth Reclamation. Bids due April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. I thought we were voting on sending out the RFP or voting on the RFP next meeting, first meeting in April.
No, it was, um, uh, we, uh, I'd mentioned when, when you were walking out that it. Uh, that I was off, uh, by the week, so we're getting it in on the eighteenth and the meeting is on the nineteenth. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, and so, uh, we are getting, we're putting it on the meeting the night, the day after we get the bids in. Uh, so it will be approved, uh, in the April meeting, the second meeting in April.
So obviously RFP has been out.
Yes.
Yeah, I missed that.
It's all the roads that were in the referendum. All the Ash Roads are in the referendum.
Okay, so we approved the RFP basically through the referendum.
And we, we, we typically don't bring the RFP to you for approval to advertise?
But we, well, we can notify you.
Brought up, we were gonna vote on it, so that's why I was confused about it. So April nineteenth, cause I'm really getting tattooed, um, on this in my district. So the second meeting in April, we will be voting on the contractor.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good news. That's further along than what I thought. Okay, I'm good.
All right. Threw in a couple of pictures for your, uh, in the packet. Again, not gonna beat a dead horse on Blue Jay McCall. You've seen that intersection several times, but here are some of the construction photos when we were striping. Uh, here is the list of the roads we just meant, we were just talking about that are on the, uh, FDR project list. And we will be adding one more road, um, pending, probably via change order or addendum, depending on the timing of the DeWitt decision. But we have talked about adding DeWitt to the list as well, um, depend, you know, subject to the outcome of the railroad closure.
Did you see the email? I guess you did, uh, from a constituent about Anza Lane? I don't, I don't know where that says.
Yeah, it's.
That little lane between McCall and Little McCall?
It, and it is, um, uh, it's on the chip seal list. The problem with the chip seal right now is you all approved the per, is the drop box for the, um, for the asphalt. Um, uh, just wore out and we couldn't repair it anymore. Y'all, uh, we did an RFP to purchase a new one. Y'all approved it. We're waiting for it to come in, uh, but that one is on, uh, on the, on the list. That one is on the list, uh, to get chip sealed.
That, that's the lane where Greg lives on the corner there. Um, what's Greg's last name?
Yeah, it kind of, right, connects McCall and Little McCall.
Yeah.
Anza Road, y'all, if y'all looked at that, I mean, is that under?
The what road?
Anza.
Yeah, yeah, it is on the list.
It's a short road.
Yeah, that's, that's what we were saying. It is, it is on the list. We're just waiting for our equipment to come back in.
Have y'all, have y'all had a chance to email, let them know that, whoever's sitting next? I didn't know how to respond, cause I, I didn't recognize the name. I thought that's what it was, but didn't recognize the name.
I had somebody call me already about it.
I'd send them an email if you don't mind.
Okay, we will.
If you hear saying, hey, that's on a list, waiting on a broken whatever and give them a timeframe. Cause it probably doesn't need a full depth reclamation, that little.
No, it's just chip sealed and it's, it's, it's on Public Works Maintenance List. It's not on a contracted maintenance list. It's on Public Works's list.
Sounds good.
All right.
Since Scuffle Town got flipped to an FDR, we're gonna prioritize that once we get this going, Scuffle Town.
Oh, Scuffle Town, yeah, that's on there, right? Yeah.
It, it was added to FDR, yes, sir.
It needs to be prioritized. It's dangerous. There's school buses bottoming out. And they're seeing sparks come out the bottom, the school buses coming down the road.
When, when, when we put out the RFP, we basically gave the contractor the full list. And obviously they get knows to proceed on all roads at once, uh, much like the hot mix asphalt. I'm sure the contractor will come to us with their, their preferred schedule of, you know, moving their equipment from one point of the county to another. So that they're not just jumping back and forth. We've tried not to dictate which ones are first or second with them. Because we want them to do it the most cost effective way for themselves.
But, but that being said, if it does not, if we, we will mention to them and if it's not a cost issue with them, you know, preferably after we award it. Um, uh, it's what we did with Timber Gate. Um, uh, you know, then they, um, uh, you know, we'll, we'll get them to move forward with the, with the per, roads that we know are priorities. And, and a lot of times, you know, they could start in multiple places and then, you know, if it's clockwise, you know, they could start at three o'clock or nine o'clock. Doesn't matter as long as they're going that way. And so, uh, at that point, once it's awarded, we can mention that, you know. Uh, here, you know, here are some priority roads for us that, that our commissioners are getting lit up.
Well, I'm gonna push back on that a little bit. Sorry, Commissioner Burdette, but, um. I've got some roads that are in really bad shape in my district as well, and I'm getting eaten up on that also. Um, I feel I've been a good team player. I mean, you've got right at eighty-eight million dollars that's gonna be spent in your district. Which I agree that it needs to be spent, but, um.
Now, I get that.
I'm not gonna roll over and just, all the money to get spent, one, most of the money gets spent in one district and then still get pushed towards the end, so I just.
I'm not trying to do that. This, it just, it goes beyond a, a, a traffic need. It, this is a safety issue.
I get it, it's in bad shape, but it just, that, that just rolls me the wrong way, so, sorry.
Well, what's, what's the timeframe on this, uh, once, once the contract's led? Is it like a hundred and twenty days?
Think we, I think we, um, I do not, Brad, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Do you remember what the ti, contract time is on the FDR? For the contractor?
To complete all these roads.
How many, how many working days?
To complete these Ash Roads.
We didn't put, we didn't put a maximum working days in the contract, so, I mean, we'll, they have a season, so it'll be this year. Just don't, I can't tell you, we didn't put a, we didn't specify a working day schedule in the RFP.
Um, well, I would assume you say a season, it would be done before the winter gets here.
Yeah, they can't do, they can't do FDR in, uh, um, uh, when it gets too cold. It's not, it's, it's even more sensitive than, than asphalt paving. Um, so, uh, they have to get it done, uh, basically before fall.
Okay, I think that, yeah, get, get it in, we'll have it next week and then, um, I would, I would discuss with both of those, the, let the commissioners tell you about the roads. They believe that the bigger issues and then you guys work with them to make sure maybe those are the top two priorities. It's not just one or the other.
Should be something we could do to work together on that, especially on the safety parts of it.
Tremendous care has to be taken in selecting the vendors, so we're having a lot of oversight and work with the consultant to put the list together. Uh, so part of that selection is looking at the capability and how many can they do at once and how quickly can they move? That, that was part of our score, will be part of our scoring and selecting.
That'd be great. Share that with us next meeting. We might look at the contract, pay in thirty, forty thousand more if we got it done quicker and more roads at one time.
Commissioner Deloitte, you noticed I was not on the L-Meg list?
No.
Okay.
We weren't on the L-Meg at all. Okay, so it's a little give and take.
Well, I'll mention, I mean, I used to fuss about. I mean, I understand, I mean, it's, I want it shared as well, but you've got a lot of traffic down there, but.
I, I don't have any on here, which is.
I, I don't have any on here, which is understandable, a lot of my, my roads are probably in neighborhoods developments. But we have to know down the road, those are gonna become roads that we're gonna have to continue to maintain, you know, as they're deeded over.
Yep, that's why I'm looking forward to this, uh, summer, when that roadhouse is done. And we can, we can go in there and hash out with each other and determine, these are our priorities.
That's right, that's right.
And then when we get to this point, it's just a matter, is the funding there, move forward these roads, that'd be very helpful, all right, anything else?
Still going, uh, I, here's just a picture, two years later, of Indigo Road looking pretty good. Uh, here's the hot mix asphalt list, that's, um, a mixture of the L-Meg and the T, uh, yeah, the T Sploes. And as you can tell, we're getting close to wrapping that up, we should have that done next month or so. Bunch of other pictures of roads in progress, some complete, some, uh, still in progress. Mentioned the T Sploes intersection projects that are all in design right now, but again, just a reminder that we are gonna get, uh, out for bid and ready for construction, uh, the turn lanes at the school on Hollick, Collic-Hemley before, uh, they, so when they break for a summer, we can get right on that project. We've talked about Effingham Parkway tonight. Master plan is done, probably the last time you'll see that slide in future presentations. Mentioned Kate's Cove subdivision, working with the HOA to repair their failing brick pavers on their private bridge. You can see the brick paver apron in these pictures is failed. Uh, you authorized funding for a cost share on that repair at a previous meeting. And then the, the silver lining on this is when the roads, when the work is complete, uh, the county will be deeding over that portion of right away the brick pavers sit on, so they won't be our responsibility in the future. So, just pictures of that project. Everybody loves to talk about this one, it, these pictures are a little dated, uh, they're, this is pictures of the road and old little road when it failed. You can see, uh, how deep and, and wide that failure was. These pictures here are from about a week and a half ago now, that's two of the four sixty inch barrels that were installed, they're all four in now. The only thing left to do, and the road is still closed to traffic, because, uh, it, we need safety guard rail, that was part of the design, is put in safety guard rail. And, uh, they gotta go in and, and stat, do their seeding and stabilization of the slopes. But it is substantially, um, complete minus the guard rail. And as soon as we get the guard rail and the signage associated with that in place, we'll be opening the road back up to traffic, they're telling me a week from Thursday, weather dependent.
And on those, on each end of those pipes, they don't have the concrete, uh, wall.
It does have a, it's got these flared head walls, and they're reinforced with a, uh, grouted rip rap. So they put the rip rap stone in, and then they put a flowable fill type of concrete to lock them together. And basically built a head wall, um, with, with flowing concrete and rock, rather than forming up and building a head wall. And that's complete. And water's flowing through it, and there's no leaks or anything like that that can be detected.
So another week, they would be finished?
Yes, sir, should be, yeah. I'll, I'll, again, gonna try to get through these as quick as I can, switching to water and sewer projects, there's a long list of our current water sewer projects and their status. Uh, we got several, um, we got one recently completed, we got several in design, uh, that are gonna be ready for construction and bidding for construction very soon. Uh, amongst that list is our surface discharge permit, uh, working with, uh, DNR to try to continue to push that through. Our master plan is going, uh, along, and we should have, we actually have a draft of a portion of the final report for us to review. It's not complete, but they gave us a, a, a nice chunk to review and make comments on.
The spray fill permit, um, go back.
Yes, sir.
What can we do to speed that up, I know we're waiting on, um.
I asked Alliance to follow up with EPD la, uh, week before last, and we had a meeting with them, uh, I guess it was Thursday or Friday week before, and they were gonna reach out to them again, uh, we had submitted, and, um, EPD made comments back, we addressed their comments and submitted them back, and we're waiting on their reaction to our response.
When was the last, because I, I think we've been waiting on them a while, haven't we?
I asked them, again, I asked them, uh, week before last to follow up with them, un, unfortunately, I was out last week, uh, un, you know, unplanned. And so I, I, I'm due a phone call back to Alliance to follow up with them.
I just, I just know from reports I had this week, we are bumping our limits. And Jamie and I are glad to drive up there, rattle some cages, if we need to rattle some cages, get this permit in.
The next step, once we get their comments, if they give us the go ahead to go on to the next phase, the next phase is designed documents for construction, so.
So if we got that to next week, how long for design and construction would we be complete, three months?
I, I, not construction, I would say probably sixty, ninety days to get the design, you gotta submit that to EPD, get that approved as well. So you're back into that waiting game of EPD approving your plans. Uh, I think a consultant finishing the design in ninety days is reasonable, and construction wouldn't be that long, maybe sixty days at the most in construction. It's a very simple construction, it's just, uh, you know, getting the plans approved is probably gonna take longer than the actual work itself.
All right, so how's that, how's that address our current issues then? Because honestly, we have current issues.
That is our quickest and best way to gain capacity, we're working on other fronts, as you can see here in this list. Um, but that is the quickest and best way for us to gain capacity is to get that spray filled in, so.
Yeah, so we, I guess, this week, we probably need to gather and talk about who do we need to call and talk, what, what buttons and cages do we need to rattle? Because I, I mean, you're talking about six months, that's a bad situation for us right now, in my opinion. I don't think we can wait, but we need to get that permits, we can get the design going.
Well, summer's usually better for us, just keep in, keep that in mind, um, uh, when it comes to, uh, uh, reuse, uh, application, uh, for several reasons, for evaporation and also because of, uh, irrigation. Uh, but, um, yeah, I agree with that, you know, I think where we can close the gap a little bit, uh, is on the, is the review timeline. Um, once we, once, once it's submitted, um, you know, just let, you know, make a few phone calls to let them know it's in. Um, you know, I don't think design is.
Do, do they know how dire we are in getting that done, I mean, that's a question, would it make a difference if they knew, we, we are bumping our limits every month right now?
I have not talked to the person directly, because we've always used Public Works and now Alliance to be our intermediary in this regard. You know, Charlie Hino has been intimately involved, and he's the one that usually has the direct contact with the, with the folks from EPD. But I know they know, and I, I feel confident that they have expressed that concern to EPD when they talk to them on our behalf. Uh, because we have these conversations with them, so.
Do we need to talk to Charlie?
And, and we may need to, um, but I, I would say, and we can talk about it tomorrow, but I would say, let's get Charlie and you guys, and, uh, let's get whoever he's talking to on the line, to make sure we hear what Charlie's telling them.
Okay.
Because sometimes they're not communicating everything that we think they're communicating, they're, they're great, they're doing a great job for us, but I, I'd like to make sure that EPD knows that we are saturating our fields and it's not good. We don't need to wait on the summer, and I probably say more than I should say in the public, but, but I, it's dire enough, we need to get, we need to get, uh, we need to get that design going and.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll hire you tomorrow, check and see what we can get going.
Some construction photos, these are dated, I mean, construction has moved significantly past these pictures on the booster station. But, uh, just, I took these pictures just to show you the sheer size, it's kind of hard to see in this picture, but you look at the ladder, you look at the car in the background of that center picture, it's a huge water line and a huge booster station that we're building there. So, uh, that's showing, the picture on the far right is the tap tie into, uh, where the pump station comes back into the main line. Another project that is.
When does that come online, is it, it's not online yet, but when?
No, sir, it's scheduled, it should be com, substantially complete in June.
Okay.
So it's a few months out, they haven't set the building yet, you're seeing the slab there, uh, they haven't set the building or anything like that yet, they're not that far along. Um, but, you know, these pictures are about a month old, so. Hodgville Road Lift Station is about ready to go to, uh, construction, working on getting the final, uh, construction drawings put together for that. Uh, there is gonna be a little bit of easement acquisition that we gotta get on the force main that, that leaves that station. And, uh, we know, we've identified all the property owners, and we don't anticipate any trouble getting easement, but we do have to get, get some easements on the force main. And, uh, the lift station itself takes much longer to build than the force main, so the two should come to the finish line together.
Will that help us out with water pressure or lift station not?
This is san, sanitary.
Sanitary.
So this, this is the.
The booster.
Booster and the loop.
Booster and the looping, that'll help with, okay, because me and Roger, we, you know, we talked about that last week.
The booster, loop A, that just went into service, loop B, that's, that's soon to go to construction. Um, those are the water system, and that will increase our pressure and our reliability considerably. Uh, this is the sanitary side, and, and the Hodgville Station is the, that's the home run, it's, everything goes to there, and then this goes to the plant.
And we, if we ever built that extra line that was gonna go through the gas line to get.
That's the force main, the second bullet point, or the third bullet point I've got listed there.
Good, good.
It goes through, um, it goes through the IDA property, Omni Trax property, and then it follows the gas line, or actually follows Effingham Parkway.
Eighteen inch line?
Yes, sir.
And that's gonna, that's gonna resolve a lot of our issues in collecting it, but, um, but not, it's not getting rid of it, that's why we're gonna get that permit.
Uh, switching gears to stormwater and drainage, we have a few projects in the, in the plans, uh, master plan, we, uh, probably will advertise that RFQ tomorrow. Allison's on the hook now to get that done, she promised me it would get done tomorrow. Um, and the Sheer House, uh, Sherrouse Road Drainage was actually a project that I was asked to, to take on when I first came on the job, just a hair over a year ago. And we just recently awarded that one to construction, and then we talked about Westwood earlier, uh, that project, it says design board pending, this is a month old. We actually awarded that contract, we had our kickoff meeting, and they're in the first phase of design.
Who was doing that one, I can't remember.
Alliance Consulting has that project.
They got their work cut out.
Yeah, yeah, they do.
I'll be surprised.
Other projects that aren't, uh, infrastructure, as infrastructure related, uh, Development Services got several cons, consulted projects out. Uh, we, you know about the code revision, uh, the pla, the plan scanning and the infrastru, structure digitizing, excuse me, uh, both support all these master plan efforts, uh, because it, it's building our maps of our infrastructure for all of our water sewer and stormwater master planning that we're doing. And we were continuing to work, uh, we do this through EOM and their engineering contract, uh, where we're chipping away at our backlog of, of final projects and final inspections to, uh, uh, get rid of old bonds and get those projects completed and accepted, and then, and if it involves public infrastructure, getting, getting it into our system. On the facility side, several projects, uh, listed here as well, that were, administration building substantially complete, got one or two punchless items just plaguing me, but we're gonna get those done. Guyton Fire Station is out for bid right now, the master plan for facilities, uh, is almost complete, we approved a change order, I think, at the last meeting or the meeting before last, to add one facility to that plan, and so that, that, uh, assessment will be done and added to the final document. Small project for the animal shelter, we're, we're working through, and then fuel and fleet management, um, they're, they're going, they're going forward. So, fleet management's slow, but it's starting, and then the fuel management is a project we're gonna need to kind of put together, uh, a revised RFP and get that back out.
The Guyton Fire Station, is that our project?
We rebid it.
Who will own that fire?
We will.
I don't know if we did it, like Springfield built their fire station.
No, that one, it's us, um, so we, we purchased the land and.
Right, they think this is the one they want to go up on the price and we rebid it, or not?
No.
No, that's the Hodgville Station.
That's Hodgville, and, and is that in here?
Yes, I haven't got to yet.
All right.
Guyton is the one that's gonna be perfect, because we've learned everything to do wrong on the Hodgville Station.
I figured the Parkway is gonna beat the Hodgville Fire Station.
Yeah.
Large margin.
They got their stuff on the ground, you get it right here.
Speaking of Hodgville Station, here's some pictures from that anchor bolt testing that we talked about at a previous meeting. Um, in the last couple of weeks, we have got notification from the general contractor, they've, they've basically walked away, and they've defaulted. So we're in the process of talking with the, if you'll remember, this price was, this project was dual gen, general contractor, one for site, one for building. The site contractor has expressed an interest and, uh, given us a quote to, uh, project manage the building. And so we're working with him to get that, uh, bid from him just as soon as possible, um, and, and get that project moving forward again.
But I, but I will say that, um, uh, having the contractor default and release his retainer uh, to us was the preferable way, rather than, um, us going the opposite direction. Uh, we did make sure that, um, all subs were paid up until that point, um, and so, uh, we, we got a release on that, so we're moving forward.
I would assume we're not gonna use that contractor anymore.
Uh, if, if, if they're still around, um, we, we will, we will not be using them again.
Before we get too far into the infrastructure, I don't recall seeing the third lane for the school.
Yeah, that, that was the, he mentioned in the, uh, intersection improvements.
It was on that one.
Yeah, that's the, that is the one that we are doing, uh, making sure we have complete prior to.
Restart.
Yeah, that, so as soon as school ends, we basically, uh, say go to the contractor on it. So we'll have that out to, out to bid relatively shortly, to be the first one.
On the parks and landscape front, we have a master plan, proposals under review, again, month old comment, we have awarded that contract uh, for the master planning work to Pond, uh, the ones that did our transportation master plan and our facilities master plan. And so that kickoff meeting, uh, is, is due very shortly, if not already, did we do it?
What, what kind of?
Next week, that's, I knew it was scheduled, so.
Park master plan, I mean, where all that conclude, I mean, what?
Uh, that was awarded, I believe, last month, uh, and it's basically related to, um, the Sploes, um, uh, list of parks. Uh, so it, uh, the, we gave them a kind of a priority, uh, on this with regards to CEM, uh, Clarence Morgan Park. Uh, we've gotta revise the, um, the, the original master plan we had for that. Um, also, there's probably the, the next one biggest, uh, would be Sand Hill, uh, because that's got the, uh, biggest, uh, second biggest investment in, um, uh, in Sploes and parks, and then, uh, actually, each park has a, a component of Sploes investment in it. So, uh, they would be handling the, uh, kind of the master planning, uh, of each of those projects.
The scope of services to Pond is a very brief and short and quick update to the twenty fifteen plan. But it, the main, uh, thrust of this update of the master plan is to take all of the projects that we know we want and get those in concept design and get construction estimates for those, so that we can prioritize those and dedicate the funding to them and get them started. So that's the main thrust of that project. Got some work going on for a disc golf course, uh, at Sand Hill Park, and then McCall Park, as you know, is, uh, under construction. We're waiting on fence, it's on back order, but as soon as the fence comes in, contractor will be hitting that project hard and getting that McCall Park finished.
They dropped some off.
Yeah, I saw some.
Black off, okay, good.
Yeah, I actually saw some this morning.
Okay, good. And speaking of McCall Park, here's some of the pictures, uh, of some of the work that has been complete, you got the dog park, the multipurpose field, see the sidewalk going to the pavilion, new roof on the pavilion, the new bathrooms, basketball courts, again, moving right along, just waiting on black fence and some asphalt for the parking lot. Patriot Point Freedom Trail Construction, that one has been awarded as well, uh, to the same contractor that did Sher, that we gave, uh, Sherrouse Drainage, we did those as a package. And that was just to finish up a, a dead end of a section that was supposed to extend to the next phase that will not, uh, due to a change in ownership of the adjacent land. And so we're finishing up that, uh, little road cul-de-sac, as it were, it's not really a cul-de-sac, but it's similar to one, uh, because there's actually two lots beyond the, in the blacktop, so we're gonna get that road finished for them. And, uh, of course, we, you know, we still have the solid waste master plan, um, that we finished last year. And, uh, of course, we, you know, we still have the solid waste master plan, um, that we finished last year on, on hold for final action.
What's the hold for?
We just, we, we had our public hearing, but we never adopted the solid waste plan.
And we could bring it up, just, um, just, uh-
We need to look at putting that back on a public hearing, going through it and discussing it.
Okay.
Sometime in the next sixty days, anyway.
Some of the new SPOLOST money starting up, we're looking at nine oh four South Pine Street remodel to move one of, uh, our, uh, probation office in. And that's where Development Services used to be. And so, uh, our first round of bidding was not very successful, so we've taken a kind of a unique approach and we reached out to a general contractor to thought, think we might be able to do this without an architect design first, and so we're still talking through them, and we had the foundation inspected here recently. We got underneath the building and saw some things that concerned us, so we wanted to get a structural engineer to evaluate the foundation.
People are too busy to quote it.
Well, it's a small project for some large architectural firms, and so I think we may have just fallen off the radar on that one.
Some of these guys that have some of our bigger projects.
Yeah, and even on some of these smaller ones, we're gonna try and package them together from now on, um, so that maybe we can entice them to do three buildings rather than just one.
That's the bulk of the capital projects. Uh, again, last month's packet had this presentation, I'll send you, I'll sh- send the updated one to Ms. Johnson for her to hand out to you. And then there's an Excel spreadsheet that's really colorful and really wordy, that has a lot more detail about these projects and their current status. And I'll keep that updated, present that to you on a regular basis as well.
That'd be great.
Get a copy made for us, okay.
Yes, sir, yes.
That'd be good.
It's Brad. Lot of projects, lot, lot accomplished too, that's good.
Brad Clement, Development Services. Uh, I get the fun part, uh, I'm gonna throw a topic out and then I'm gonna stand back and listen to you all talk about it. Uh, topic is shipping containers. We all know what they are, what they look like, but it's not mentioned in our code of ordinance anywhere. So we have seen an uptick in problems and conflicts based on that absence as it relates to container yard usage. Is it appropriate for residential use? And if so, how many, how high at a time? What happens when somebody wants to ele- electrify them? And we have no guidance. Uh, in some instances, they get treated as it's, as if it were commercial parking, which it's not. It's a component of a commercial vehicle. So I'm gonna stand back and I'm gonna listen to what you say, and I'm gonna write it down, and I'm gonna give that to the, uh, the lady who's doing our code update.
Now, you're talking about folks that drug them in their backyards for storage sheds.
Yeah, they're, they're cheap and they're plentiful.
I see them advertised.
So they're not technically auxiliary, uh, structures. It's not a structure.
So we're talking about people that wanna do the pop-up ports, this is the-
It's, it's all of the above because we don't address it.
Category for that in I- one now as far as that goes.
Could be, but again, it's not explicitly mentioned.
Yeah, it's like, people buy containers and all and put them in the yard.
They're just putting them in the yard.
They're not so cheap anymore either. They're about four grand for a-
Well, and so, again, they're listed in the ICC as a structural component, not a structure. And so how we deal with them, how we inspect them, and again, what happens when we get the first permit request? What do I, what do I have to do to electrify this? What are you talking about?
Well-
Concrete slab to start with.
I can tell you, Hallstead, which is a commercial flooring manufacturer and importer, they've developed office space out of containers. And it's beautiful. They did a great job with it, so they do use it for, in lieu of building supplies. Although at that time, it was more expensive to do that with a container, but now with everything, Sky House lumber and, and metal studs and everything.
Again, I'm just shopping for guidance because it's not up to me to make the decision or to staff.
What are some of the issues we're having now? I guess it's coming, it's coming an issue or you wouldn't be bringing it up.
Well, it, it pops up a lot during, uh, code enforcement visits. What do we do? Triggers complaints. There's nothing that I can point to to say you can't be doing that.
Lives in the subdivision, they got a container in their backyard.
I don't think an H O A for a subdivision would cover something like that, wouldn't it?
We don't have H O As on all subdivisions though.
Well, I know, but I mean, in those instances.
It might, but we don't have some code.
And if, and if I can, there's a, there's a couple of things, uh, on here too. I mean, there's, there's two components of this, right? There's, there's the folks who take one container, uh, or two containers and, you know, and, and put it in the back of their property on A R two, A R one, or, or even our property. Uh, and then, uh, how do we address this on the pop-up port side? Uh, because, uh, we, since we don't mention it, people are trying to shoehorn this into a definition that already exists in our, uh, like a ex- outdoor storage facility. Right? Um, and you know, and so they're, they're saying that, well, this should fit into there. I mean, we, we, we've gotten these things and we say, no, it doesn't. Um, but I think we need to, on the industrial side, define it uh, that, uh, that a outdoor storage facility does not include, um, uh, uh, these storage containers. Uh, and that, um, uh, that it's either a conditional use in industrial. We have to actually put it in there or they're gonna try and squeeze it into somewhere that it doesn't belong. Uh, like they did the other day.
Port Wentworth and Pooler, I believe, do it, do, if you get it off a chassis and you stack it, it becomes a heavy industrial use. If you keep it on a chassis and you don't remove it from it, then it's a light industrial use, like a trucking yard. A motor, motor, what they would consider motor freight terminal. So it is definitely an industrial use. It's not a, a B or a C district. In our case, it's a B district. But, uh, once, once you remove it from that chassis and start stacking, you know.
And so we, we, we've looked to surrounding jurisdictions, some closer than others, trying to maintain, you know, character like kind.
Those people not know staff them if you put one in your backyard.
I'm talking, I'm talking just industrial part of it, not-
I think we got, I think we gotta split it into-
Yeah.
Right. Into resident, you know, how we look at it.
So, so store, commercial store uses them during holidays for over stockage, storage during Christmas, if you can think of that, I'm sure you've ever bought-
Temporary storage.
Temporary, these are temporary.
That falls in a different category.
Uh, you know, so we don't want to-
Man, wouldn't it be good maybe to, for you to come with us since you're faced with the i- issues and conditions and say, these are our, these are our situations, these are the conditions we're gonna face and are facing, and this is what we recommend. And, and then let's give that to the zoning person, cause I'm sitting here thinking-
I, I could do that. Uh, I could offer up staff if you wanted to do a workshop, but I was prepared to stand back and let you fight amongst yourselves and take notes.
Well, I don't think, unless, does she have some input on what you wanna see? I think we wanna allow somebody with five acres of land to put a container back there perhaps.
A container.
A container.
Well, and so we have some suggestions.
This, so we're bouncing back and forth between the-
Yeah, we need to stay on one subject.
Yeah, he was talking industrial pop-up ports, and now we're back to putting-
He didn't say that. He was, he's got containers.
You'd have to have five acres.
They, they live in all districts and, and they, they span all uses. Imagine people are getting more and more creative with the uses for these.
Of course, we need to stay categorically where you wanna talk about first, iron that out and go from there.
So what do you wanna talk about? You wanna talk about back somebody with a couple acres put in the backyard? Do you wanna talk about the pop-up, pop-up ports?
Yeah, you wanna talk about industrial use or are we talking about-
Or do we need a workshop? Because this is a big deal to me, cause we just voted that one down over in my district. If you ride down twenty-five in Port Wentworth now, where I used to play ball when I was a kid. They're stacked seven highs as far as you can see, and I-
I thought he was just talking about like somebody got a couple acres and they, they use that, that's a, that's a quick workshop or something.
He's talking about everything.
Or contain them.
But I mean, this, this is almost workshop worthy, I think.
Still building your little shop, a little storage room, you pay a couple thousand dollars.
And getting the public involved.
So wouldn't it be good for Brad to come back with what others are doing and recommendations and, and that's a start, you know, give us something that Statesboro or, or-
We're, we're prepared to provide you a frame, framework. Uh, but again, to discuss it out, we don't, we're not obligated to follow, of course, any other jurisdiction and there's some unique properties to our own.
And then you could talk with them about, you know, what issues have y'all had with your containers and your ordinances and so forth, and give us a framework and let's do a workshop in the next sixty days on it maybe and-
And I would look at places closer to the port. They've already experienced our growing pains ahead of time, and they know, hey, we did this, it did work. Did this, it didn't work, you know, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel.
Okay.
They've already been through it all.
Very good, that's all I got.
Yeah, thank you, Brad.
Hey, this'll be an adventure for you, I promise.
Yeah. I'm, I'm glad you bring it up. I li- I really have situations come up before to become real problems and, and we can start addressing them. That's good.
And Mr. Chairman, you bring up the point a lot about how do we go from industrial to residential a lot. Maybe we should look at that at the same time. How, how did other people do it, you know, and how successful is it? What does it look like? Is it something we wanna do or? You know, I'd love to see some data on that, cause we, we're, like I said, twenty years ago, our ordinances were fine, but everything has changed now.
I was just talking about residential, I hadn't-
Yeah, residential, I mean, I-
Commercial.
I don't know much about that part.
You don't have but an acre and yard, you're not gonna do it commercial anyway. You just want one for a building to store stuff in junk.
Uh, they're all over the county set up. There's two with a-
We're close to the port.
They make it a barn.
I've got one by it, nobody sees it, but I want it gone anyways.
And everything else and-
I kind of inherited it from somebody.
Stick some on the piece of hortland I got.
Oh, yeah, when I had, when I had some, uh, rental business, I had a couple of them on my property that that's where I stored carpet and stuff with. I don't know if they were the code or not, probably not, so we need something on that. Nobody's ever asked me about it. No code enforcement ever gave me a ticket, so I don't know.
Right now, the can.
How to deal with the hundreds that are-
Doing in that container.
Right.
They're already out there. I mean, now how are we gonna deal with the ones that are already there too?
If they're unseen and not a nuisance.
Oh, I agree. No, I'm, I'm not saying move, I'm just saying, how do we just-
Well, a lot, a lot of this is moving forward. You know, you gotta be careful about, uh, like if it's not a nuisance, open a can of worms, but you can certainly get some control over it before you double the county size again, you know.
I got three or four of them. I got storage in them, I got feed in one of them, I got them all kinds of different stuff.
You need to send code enforcement to, uh, Mr. Lopez.
Is it, is it commercial use? Is it, or is it not?
My wife would love to know they're not allowed, so I can send somebody to go get them.
There's nothing in the code we're saying. We need, we need, we need some for residential, commercial, industrial, we need something, you know, when can and how high and how many acres you gotta have.
I use mine on the farming, so don't come out and check mine.
Buy a forty thousand dollar container as opposed to build a ten thousand dollar shop, you're gonna go buy-
You don't wanna get shot either.
All right, I think you got your marching orders. You s- you see there is interest in it, Mr. Brad, to, uh, come up with some, uh, recommendations from your staff, put some together. Maybe make a presentation to us at a workshop, then we can chew on that a little bit and come back with some ideas on it.
We didn't know what direction you were leaning, and we didn't wanna lean in the wrong direction, so this was the first step. If you had thoughts or feelings or were deeply passionate about this topic, we were prepared to listen to you.
It sounds like there's a, there's a desire.
Yeah, we made it clear as mud so far.
Yeah, well, it sounds like the desire to allow them, but we do wanna know about them and control how they're done. And, or provide some direction on how they're done, so.
That, that allows us to be consistent and all agree on the words.
Yeah, yeah, and protect people who have half acre tracts that got two containers stacked in their backyard.
I would say no residential use stack, you know, if it-
I, I agree. I'm saying that, 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 this will protect it, but right now they don't have any way to-
Yeah.
And it's the H O A too, sound like the site on-
When you try to address that through building heights, you know, that's, we're really not talking about the same thing, but it's the only tool I got in mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. I get you. It's smaller than the main house. It's sitting behind it like it's supposed to, and it's not above the height, so what else do you do? So we need to address it residentially, and it could be simple saying not permitted.
Most of them about eight feet tall and nine maybe.
They're not tall.
Red.
All right. Anything else from any of our staff? Okay, our clerk.
Your clerk actually has a, a pretty long list of things, but I'm tired and I'm going to just kinda run a list of, um, some of them, and I'm going to send an email to you all that I need you to promise you're gonna look at and you're gonna respond to because it is important information, okay? So, um, your ACCG conference, you all are registered. I'll send those details to you individually by email. Um, there's a printout of several pieces of legislation as relevant, including the T-SPOLOST that you mentioned earlier for your reading. Um, wanted to talk to you all about a naming policy. I'll send that in an email to you. This is more a good reading. This is a key consent procedure policy. Please review it, look it over, let me know if you have any changes or any additions. I'd like to put it before you at our next meeting.
So the key consent is up consent agendas?
No, this is for keys.
Oh, keys?
Yeah, keys.
Open keys, okay.
Keys and phone, yeah.
I got you, access keys, control.
And lastly, really quick, we have two filming permits being issued this week for filming at Tommy Long. Both projects are at Tommy Long.
Okay.
One is for one day, one is for four days, so there will be activity in that area this week, next week, I'm sorry.
Need some actors?
Do they need actors? They haven't, they haven't mentioned that.
Very good.
That's it. Everything else will come in an email to you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We'll go around the horn.
Uh, I've pretty much addressed the Ziegler Road thing. I did get a call and it's actually in, uh, Rogers District, uh, and I'm disappointed it's gonna be four to five years before we get the roundabout at, uh,
Thirty.
Seventeen in Hodgsville, because that's, people are cutting down Pecan Lane and Scuffletown Road as it backs up on Hodgsville, that the folks there and, and those neighbors can't even get out of, on the Pecan Lane to get traffic. Of course, I skipped Rogers number, but.
Thank you.
But no, I mean, I don't know, I mean, honestly, as a friend of mine, I said, I don't really know what we can do.
Seventeen in Hodgsville?
It's thirty.
Thirty, I'm thirty, yeah.
It, when it backs up so far, they, they can cut through and they can get ahead of that Hodgsville traffic to make a left. But then it backs up all the way out Scuffletown and Pecan Lane and, uh, or vice versa, and, uh,
Thirty in Hodgsville's in Chatham County, right?
Getting out of their houses.
Yeah, that's a state roundabout and that's the problem.
That's right.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's not even, it's not even Effingham down there that the roundabout, I mean, that we're talking about. That's the only way. But I don't know how you stop anybody from doing a cut through either. But anyway, it's, you probably got the same call I got.
Yeah, several more.
We do need to try to see if we can stay behind and see if we can get it pushed up a little bit. I don't know if we can or not, but that's-
Well, something gonna be one of my questions. I mean, that was literally a gut punch for me, cause, uh, and that's one thing I'm gonna talk about here in a few minutes, but, uh, there's gotta be something we can do to make that go quicker. That's, that's the biggest pressure point we have in District Two. And everybody's flooding through that one point, diverting going to Scuffletown. And once you get to Scuffletown, if you guys been this way, if you have it, please ride down it. You can see that the traffic's already backed up all the way from thirty, so as soon as they see that traffic, they shoot off Scuffletown. If it gets really bad, they'll cut off Colley Helming and go to thirty and then make a left. I thought I was in school traffic the other day, and it was backed up almost to the elementary school. I get up, everybody's turning left. So when I finally got on thirty to go take a right toward the school, it was wide open. That's how bad it is right now.
Well, it's, it's a state highway. We just gotta, seventeen and Blue Jay, they sped it up because it was a safety issue. Is it not a safety issue there? Um, are there a lot of accidents? Is there something we could do to?
And, um, if you recall, um, Ann Purcell kinda spearheaded this project for us, uh, to get the funding for it. Um, uh, because it's, it's a unique project in that, um, it's, you know, Chatham County wasn't gonna push for it, even though it's in Chatham County. Uh, so we can, uh, set up, I can set up a phone call with her just to see if there's something that we can do to get this moving along at a quicker pace.
And that's probably the issue. It's not a priority for Chatham County, so.
Is there any way we can trade dollars? Say Effingham Parkway, we may put in additional money we weren't gonna put into to trade out for the state putting in money at Hodgsville and thirty? Cause I know legally, we can't spend money outside of our, our district.
Right.
So maybe we spend some additional funds. I mean, it'd be a, you know, a wash, but maybe we get with Ms. Ann and ask her.
Trade off some funds.
Can we trade off the funds, pay more for the Parkway? So then they could put money towards design, cause as they told us in Atlanta, they're, they want the counties and cities to start cost sharing more to get what they want. So I just don't know if that's a way we can speed that up.
My guess would be no.
Maybe a coordination with Chatham.
So we're still spending our money legally, it, well, probably not good to say on record, but of course, we would always spend our money legally.
Yes, sir.
Well, we would still be checking that box, but then DOT could spend the money where they need to.
Right, I, I get what you're saying on that.
It's Chatham County, but it's Effingham's problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you bring Chatham together and you bring Effingham together and DOT, to your point, and we say, we'll, we'll put a million dollars toward the roundabout at, at, uh, Goshen and, and the Parkway toward the construction, that they said they would do the construction, if you, we'll take a million that you were gonna do there and go to Chatham and see if we can get that thing designed and started.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm thinking, uh, GDOT's already agreed to pay for this, so I, I'm thinking, but it, the problem is it's, you know, they, they plan, um, several budget years out. And so I'm trying to think if there's maybe a GDOT project that we've got here, uh, that, you know, if we, if we can somehow move that up and get reimbursed on the project- and get reimbursed on the project here, you know, I'll try and figure that out, I, I'll, I'll talk with, uh, um, uh, Ann, Ann Purcell and, and see what the options are.
But, but to Jamie's point, it's, it's not a bad thought that if they got the funding set for twenty-four, twenty-five, and they knew they had a million dollars and they do it two years earlier, they may say, hmm, it's a three million dollar project, and if we get a million now, let's move it in front of, uh.
Cause we could trade a backend cost.
Yeah.
And then that's kinda what I'm saying, is that, you know, I mean, we can maybe get it on the back end, you know, a, a few years down the road in a project that's in the, you know, like a, like a, a blue, um, Old River and eighty, right, um, that's something that we're working on. You know, a project like that, you know, where we can kinda get, you know, the cost share back on it, I'm, I'll, I'll look at options, uh, with her, just see if we can come up with ideas to move this ahead.
Yeah, I mean, not as be Effingham Parkway, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another project.
It's an idea, okay. Sounds good, anything else?
Why couldn't we, why couldn't, is, why couldn't we do, work an intergovernmental agreement with Chatham County and fund it?
Well, it's funded by GDOT already, we're just trying to have them move it up, they're gonna pay for it.
Oh, okay, so this moves beyond what Jamie was saying.
He was trying to get it moved up by creating some funding for GDOT to get it on an earlier calendar.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we had an intergovernmental agreement that was appropriate, I don't know.
Right, and that could be an option that, that when I talked to her about it.
Could be, I saw that Chatham's gonna throw any money at it since it's not a priority for them.
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to in an, in a government agreement, depending on what health, oh.
Or no, from us.
Yeah.
Would it be just Chatham or Fort One, well, I guess, well, it's a state highway, it'd be GDOT.
Still, I still don't think we can spend money outside of county though.
Even if it benefits us to move our constituents.
But I think we, we looked into this earlier.
Well.
Anyway, we're not gonna solve that tonight.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if you get that, but the idea you had was if we paid some money on this, GDOT can go spend it on that, and go to Chatham and say, hey, we can move this up if you'll help us whatever the other do.
Yeah, you can do it, yeah.
And then they're spending it, not us, which is.
Yeah, yeah.
Got some more, Roger?
Uh, I was gonna pass these out, but Brad, we don't have the one with the, I was asking for the number of rooftops per subdivision and all that on there, did you get that, Teresa?
Uh, GIS is still working on that.
They're still working on that one?
Wanted to give you a draft and get your feedback in terms of, you know, we can do this for all the districts, it's just a matter of getting a really good model.
So, I don't think this one has everything on there, but, cause it only listed like twelve hundred and we've got seventeen hundred.
We, I had some discussion with the GIS folks to try to ascertain what your intent was, what you were looking for.
Brad, you can the mic if you will.
G D N.
Brad, uh, so I talked with the GIS analyst, uh, to ascertain what your, your desire was, uh, you had asked for rooftops, are you looking for a hard count per lot, per subdivision? Are you looking for roof coverage per open, what, what are you trying to, to understand?
Put the email on one of the, like, if you've list, uh, the new development on the Helmy track, go ahead and list the number of rooftops on there, so we can get it.
Okay.
We can look, instead of going to Legends and everything, I can look at this and go, oh, I've got three hundred and forty people coming out.
Do you want to see the rooftops, or do you just wanna count?
No, just to count, just to count the area, that way you can see where the pressure point's gonna be, even a layman like me could, could see it and see how, how bad it is now as opposed to how bad it's going to be in the future, and anything we have approved already, I wanna see on there.
And just for residential, what about existing other types of roofs? Well, commercial, any, anything, any rooftop structure that would apply density of development?
You're just looking for new development.
Cause I don't worry about.
I think rooftops is throwing them all, throwing it off.
What I mean by rooftops is residential rooftops, every time we add, add a job here, we actually keep people here, it helps with traffic flow.
Units, units.
So, every time we put a job on the books in Effingham County, we're keeping somebody in the county, that's a great thing to me for, as far as traffic flow goes. But what I'm talking about is a residential potential person to have to leave Chatham, uh, leave Effingham to go work in Chatham County, which is where our big problem is, and I, I emailed everybody just some data, um, seventeen hundred and ten, I think it was, Teresa, total approved places that can be built just in my district. In addition to what we have right now, I just want you guys to think about that, Tim's working on some stuff that's a little more relaxed than my original idea. Three years is what I'm asking for, if things get built, we get a thing, if we get stuff going, I have no problem backing that up, but to the chairman's point, I'd have a heck of a time extending it if I needed it, so, that's, I'm pleading with you guys that, to help me scale back just a little bit, just think about these people driving every day. That's all I'll say for now, it's, it's, it's just, it's a mess, it's an absolute mess every morning, and it's getting worse and worse, and we don't even, half the stuff's not even built yet.
And, and, and that's my point on the water and sewer, talking about, about the sewer, you know, if you add four or five hundred houses to our sewage, um, sanitary sewage, I don't, I don't know what we're gonna do with the gray water if we don't get this permit approved, you know, I don't care how fast it evaporates in June, if you add five hundred homes, it may not work out, it may still be saturated.
Yeah, we did get some good news on the schools, Jancy emailed me and said that they've secured, I think, seventy acres on Blue Jay for a new elementary school. There'll be more coming on that, that's some great news for everybody, um, cause I was really worried about South Elementary, South, South Effingham Elementary, got so much room to expand there, and a lot of it's going in that little corner, you know, and I've had complaints, I've had people beat me up that are in the developing world and the real estate world, but I've actually had some real estate people that live in my district that are, are all for it, cause they have to drive it every day. It's different when you're driving in it as opposed to, to, to being in the industry, but, uh, I'm just trying to push everybody in Jamie's district for a while, I'm just kidding. But, to your point, Jamie, it's not about a dollar, dollar figure, for me, it's about just doing stuff in a safe manner, same thing we want our kids to be in, I wanna look out for their kids too. But that's, if I have to give up something to help you to get something done in a safe manner, I, I would do that, and, you know, that, I'm not so worried about people breaking me over the coals and a, a kid getting hurt or some safety issue or like that, and I, you know, I would work with you or anybody here any way I could to do the safe thing.
Are we still looking at the legal possibility of what it might look like if we restricted, uh, some growth until certain infrastructure was in place, are we still looking at that with Lee?
Yeah, uh, and, uh, I had a meeting with, um, with Lee on that, uh, to come up with, um, some options, I know he's looking at, um, how, uh, jurisdictions, other jurisdictions in Georgia have done it.
That's fine, just wanna make sure they're working on that.
Um, I, I think it would probably be something tied to i- infrastructure, certain infrastructure being completed, uh, and, um, and probably something to the effect of, uh, similar to what we have now, R six and R three rezonings.
Yeah.
Or we had before it expired.
The other thing I was gonna mention off the topic of this, and, and Commissioner Deloach may wanna talk about this instead of me, you know, I got a call from Shelby, a blind lady, did you talk with her? Were you gonna bring it up?
Yeah, she called, at the time.
Did you wanna talk to that, or were you gonna bring it up tonight, or?
I, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but I mean, I can talk about it if you want me to.
And it's, she had some good ideas, and I can understand it, well, just let everybody know, she's, she's a blind lady, she's concerned about there's nothing to do around here for disabled people, and she had some good points, and, um, she mentioned, and I know nothing about this area at all, as far as dis, people with disabilities and what they do or don't do, I just don't encounter it, so I'm, I'm oblivious to it, I'm ignorant to it, but, um, you know, she mentioned some hiking trails, I didn't know the blind could do that, but there's some things that they can do, maybe this is a thought, we could start looking at incorporating some of our recreation areas, we've got McCall Park that's gonna have a hiking trail around it, you know, that's flat and everything, maybe we could look at doing something like that for the disabled. I asked her if she wanna come speak, and she says, no.
Well, well, good place to begin there is probably, uh, ask her, and, and maybe there's some others, and Stephanie may know of folks we can get to contact, I don't know, cause she's a long time in this community, that might come visit with one or two of the commissioners and the manager and just give us some ideas.
I know we're, we're very sensitive to ADA access and everything, we, we do what we're supposed to do with that, but I never really thought about, um, you know, what recreation or things for them to do.
Won't we, won't we, so we can keep this thing, maybe won't we put that on a project list somewhere where we'll get the contact person here and maybe add some of the names to it, and just have a little think tank in the next sixty days with someone.
We got the walking trail at both our parks that.
Yeah, I don't know what it would take to like alter something like that to.
I mean, if they're blind, they got to have somebody to walk with them.
Not necessarily, there may be something we don't know about technology wise, or that you put on the sidewalk, that, that they identify with, that, that keeps them in line.
They put a rope or a handrail or something.
Could be, there, there's probably something that they know that we don't know.
You might put a handrail on one side of it, but I don't, I'm just saying.
Some kind of rope handrail that they could follow along and get outdoors.
And, and we could ask, um, Pond to look what our options are, uh, at, uh, at some of these parks when they're designed, because I know.
Might research for us as well, you know.
C E M, um, uh, I know C E M is going to have a, um, a, a walking trail as part of, uh, the, uh, the build out, and so, um, you know, we could look at, uh, you know, options, uh, ma- you know, making sure, you know, not just on blind, but, you know, that it's, uh, you know, suitable for, um, uh, ADA compatible basically, uh, on that, so, we, and we, we can met, and they probably have some ideas from, from having dealt with this before.
Yeah, why don't you run and I'll get a think tank going and, and that, be part of our workshop this summer when we meet to talk about what we could do, I like it, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Mr. Kiefer?
Um, mine, do we, are we still fielding, um, complaints on D R T, or is, where, how is that being handled?
Uh, I haven't, I haven't come across any, uh, from them, um, uh, but, uh, is, are they in, are they in Springfield? Do you know, or is it?
Nah.
Uh, no, but they're on their sewer.
They're on their sewer, okay.
They're, they're not.
Yeah, I, I have not come across any complaints from D R T.
I believe they have a complaint line.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's.
Cause it's not really.
Going in the trash can, I mean, well, it just needs to be some accountability, I don't know how to.
Okay.
You know, at least, you know, see that, that, what the complaints are, are they being addressed, are they being reported, if they have to be reported to, uh, E P D, or?
Yeah, I can, uh.
Cause I'm still getting complaints on that.
Okay.
I think we had talked about allowing the city to annex because there's franchise taxes and things they can get that we don't get, but I don't think that's ever happened, I think it's still.
No, it hasn't happened.
That's, that's in the county, they have the water and sewer out there, and I don't think they're actually on the sewer, they just wanna be on the sewer, uh, that was, that was one of discussions, Springfield wouldn't, they put them on because of the.
I got you.
Issues they had.
Yeah, and when we can, I mean, I could find out, um, uh, just do a search for code, uh, and see if we've actually got any complaints that I haven't heard about. Um, but, you know, if not, I mean, there's nothing stopping us from, uh, reaching out to Brant, uh, and setting up a meeting with them out there, uh, just to, you know, find out what their process is and, and what they're hearing.
I know they've made improvements, there, but it's, there are times when it's still.
Okay.
Pretty bad.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, all right, is there anything else that we need to discuss from anyone this evening? Uh, did you wanna, we do really need a brief executive session to update you on the, a meeting we had.
Real quick, yeah, it's a, a real quick executive session.
I mean, it's really quick, we felt we need to update you on the J D A meeting I had this week, so, uh, can make motion to go in executive session?
Make a motion to go in executive session to discuss property, personnel, lit, possible litigation.
Take it.
Much Mr. Loach, second my Mr. Kiefer, go in executive session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, here you know, we'll, we'll be in executive session, and we're just gonna come out and adjourn if somebody else wants to dismiss, cause we have no other business tonight, but we just need about five minutes back here, okay?
All right.
No, I will not. I'll probably lose all my crap.